All right, we'll get started everyone. I believe Chair Newman is not going to be able to make it this morning. Okay, so thank you all for joining us. And we will go ahead and I think John Hudson will get us started here with some overview of where we are to this point.
Thank you, Commissioner. Welcome. This is our final scheduled budget work session. At your next regularly scheduled meeting, we intend to present to the board a recommended budget with an accompanying message. At the first meeting in June, we will hold public hearing on the budget and move to adoption at the second meeting in June. So this is our timeline. Today, we will begin with changes made to the budget since our last work session. With this budget balance, we're able to provide a financial outlook to you. From there, we will move to fire districts and requested rate increases. We have five fire districts that have requested tax rate increases. When we are finished with fire districts, we will briefly discuss education funding. And then hear from our education partners. We will finish our day with a discussion of community investments and discuss our next steps. Since the last time we met, there have been a few changes to the budget. We have a reduction in public health revenue that has been moved to the grants fund to support the mobile team. We are increasing the budget for the Medicaid Hold Harmless Payment from the state to bring it closer to actual fiscal year 23 receipts. We will transfer excess bond revenue from the Capital Projects Fund to pay down debt specifically related to the 2015 limited obligation bond issuance. These changes result in net revenue increase of $2.86 million. On the expansion side, we reduced operating expenditures from departments. We moved public health expenditures to the grants fund to support the mobile team. We added $100,000 for the Green Bank as requested by commissioners. We reduced budgetary contingency from $1 million to $500,000. We identified debt service payments related to public school capital and have moved that amount to the Public School Capital Needs Fund. These changes reduced expenditures by $1.89 million. Also, these changes reduced the budget by $4.74 million. This brings us to the total general fund budget of $423,560,422. With expenditures at that amount and revenues budgeted at $404,726,352, we will budget appropriate fund balance of $18,834,70. This results in a 3.5% increase over the fiscal year 23 amended budget. This brings us to our two-year outlook. For our outlook, we have made some assumptions. On the revenue side, our tax rate remains at 48.8 cents. We project a 3.2% natural annual growth in property tax. We project $48.9 million in fiscal year 24 sales tax revenue and other revenues growing by between 1 to 4% based on the source. On the expenditure side, we've calculated a 6.5% annual growth in education, a 1% growth in operating and program support budgets, 5% growth in personnel in fiscal year 25, as well as investments in strategic plan priorities. Our target is to finish above the minimum 15% fund balance by policy ending fiscal year 25. With those assumptions in mind, adding the fiscal year 23 projections I discussed at our last work session and the fiscal year 24 second pass budget, we see a 17.4% fund balance remaining at the end of fiscal year 2024. This fund balance dips below the 15% target in fiscal year 25 to 11.1%, which will require future evaluation of revenues and expenditures next year. Are there any questions about anything I've covered so far?
Thank you, John, and thank you for doing that outlook out a couple of years, too. I think that's really helpful.
So with that, we will move to fire districts. Five districts are requesting tax rate increases with 15 preferring to remain at the rate taken last year and use the natural growth for additional revenue. As usual, salaries and equipment are the primary drivers for fire districts as well as facility maintenance and capital for building new facilities. Here are the tax rates for the current year, the requested rate for fiscal year 24, and the county's recommended rate. We will discuss the five districts recommending changes over the next few slides. They're also here today to speak to you about their requests. ANCA is requesting an increase of 1.5 cents per $100 of assessed value. This will result in additional revenue of $532,631 above natural growth. ANCA is working toward implementing an additional engine company and are phasing new positions toward that end. Fiscal year 24 is also the last year of a three-year plan to get all employees to at least $15 an hour. Finally, they're in the initial stages of planning for a replacement relocation of their main station. County is in support of this requested increase. Chief Beddingfield is here today to speak to their request.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for allowing me to share a little bit of time with you this morning. Got a short slideshow here that's going to basically go over what we're looking for and why we're looking for it. And there's some other things in this packet that I've given you that's behind the tabs that you'll be able to review as well. And again, on behalf of the ANCA Fire Department and Board of Directors, thank you for your time today. So give you a little bit of background on ANCA Fire Department. We're running right now 41 full-time positions. Thirty-nine are operational, two administrative, and we have four volunteers right at the moment. We're operating on at out of three fire stations, 24/7, 365. We provide advanced fire and emergency service delivery. Our call volume is averaging about 3,550 calls per year, and that's over the last three years. Our CAD calls are averaging about 3,800 over the same timeframe. We cover a 40 mile, a square mile district that's divided into three sub-districts, one, two, and three. It consists of residential, commercial, government, medical, wildland, and rural response areas. And we're serving approximately 28,000 people according to 22 census. Our request, first of all, on the background, in March of 2019, our Board of Directors approved a three-point or a three-cent increase then. That was in support of opening and operating Station 3 and the hiring of additional personnel to do that. Through county leadership meetings and ANCA Fire and Rescue, we compromised at a 1.5 cent increase due to the delay in construction of Station 3. So fast forward a few years, in March of 2023, the Board of Directors again approved to increase the tax rate to 12 cents, which was the original amount back in 2019. And this is primarily to support personnel and employee programs. In addition to, we're planning over the next three-year period to hiring one person per shift so we can operate another engine company out of Station 3 due to the call volume and the increased activity over in District 3. In addition, as was mentioned by John just a few minutes ago, three years ago, as of July, we began a program to increase employee salaries $1.30 per hour across the board. And this is the third year of that program to get everybody above our, get our initial firefighters or our first line firefighters above $15 an hour. And it looks like based on the census of the county that we may have to look at that again at some point in the future to meet the living wage. Okay, this is a breakdown of our budget. It's more detailed in the packet here on further on past the tabs, but basically like any other business, and we do consider ourselves a business, our salary and benefits is the largest cost of of our expenses. After that, we're looking at the facility new construction, that's actually for Fire Station 3 pay mortgage payments. The facility maintenance is maintaining those three facilities. Equipment, personal protective equipment and wildland gear is very expensive. SCBA's are very expensive to outfit one firefighter. We're concluding SBA, looking at about $10,000. Vehicle and fleet maintenance. Those have also increased this year to fuel costs and maintenance. We do have the ladder truck we're operating currently out of Station 3, and it is a little bit expensive to maintain, so we've increased the budget on that. The other expenses, with the exception of the one next to the last, which is our restricted funds, we're putting about $75,000 into we have is 30-plus years old and has a lot of Band-Aids on it and needs a lot of maintenance that we've been keeping up with for several years. But we're looking at possibly getting a new facility at some point in the future, maybe about five years out. And we do include, I intend to include, being able to house EMS as well as have a location where law enforcement can do some of their work if they need to. That's not downtown. There any questions? Okay, if we can, I'll just quickly go over the tabs that's in your little packet. If you'll look at the purple tab, that's the calculator for the tax rate for ECA. The yellow tab is our request, which gives a bigger breakdown of our budget requests. The green tab is the approved budget by the board as of last month. The blue tab is a comparison to our budget from last year to this year with the 12% if we, or 12 cents if we are approved. And lastly, the red tab is our operating and capital expense workshops. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Chief. I really appreciate your detail here that you provided us, and also thank you for looking at being able to house EMS and some of our, working with the sheriff as well on your new facility.
Absolutely. Thank you. French Broad is requesting an increase of 5 cents per $100 of assessed value. This will result in additional revenue of $200,933 above natural growth. French Broad requires major renovations to their main station and design has already been completed. This increase will also bring firefighters up to $15 an hour and increase their retirement contributions. County is in support of this requested increase. Chief Shelton is here today to speak to their request.
Good night, good morning. We are requesting a 5 cent increase to raise the average pay start-up, $15 an hour. We're currently at $1,275 an hour. We're looking at doing a 12% into the 401Ks, doing a $750 a year stipend to a HSA to help, because we got a $1,500 deductible on our insurance, help that part of it out. And we are looking at new facility. We've already done the preliminary stuff, the the designs and everything we need for that part of it. So I'm short and fleeting to the point. Any questions? No, it's a remodel of the station we have. Our station is, first part of it was built in '69, and then '71, then '91. So we're going to take the part that's '91, it'll stay there, add two bays, tear the old part down. That'll be offices, bedrooms, new community room, and all that.
Well, thank you, Chief Shelton. We appreciate you coming in and the information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jupiter is requesting an increase of 2 cents per $100 of assessed value. This will result in additional revenue of $180,620 above natural growth. Jupiter is looking to replace an engine as well as constructing a new substation, which will reduce the fire insurance rating for residents. They will also be increasing half of a position to fully staff equipment and meet fire standards on scene. Jupiter initially requested a 3 cent increase, and after discussing their request with the county manager and budget office, have been able to revise their budget and lower their increased request to the current 2 cent increase request. County is in support of this requested increase. Chief Alman is here today to speak to their request.
Good morning, everyone. Like we said earlier, we're requesting 2 cents. That is to add an additional, add a substation to our district. Right now, we have a split district, which is a 9E4 area for ISO ratings. And that is because of the travel distance from our current station. So we purchased the property several years ago and have already paid for that. And we're just now wanting to put a station on it so we can have everybody Have everybody all have the same, same ratings. And also our call volumes has, has went up on the other end, it's on the far end of Jubilee Road closer to Madison County and meets French Broad. And they've added the Dollar General and some more stuff in which raises our call volumes up and added a couple of new housing developments and. Uh, also we are replacing a twenty-six-year-old fire engine. And uh, we, we've already signed the contract on it. We are also adding a position, we have a daytime position now that goes from. Eight o'clock to six o'clock and we're making that a twenty-four hour position around the clock, so to give us four people. Uh, twenty-four hours, so that's, that's what our request is for. If anybody has any questions.
Well, thank you very much, Chief Alman, and I'm sure the residents out there will appreciate having a reduced fire insurance.
Yeah, yeah, that'll make our whole area within about three and, three to three and a half miles from a fire station now, with, with exception of just one little short area.
Thank you.
Riceville's requesting a, an increase of two cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. This will result in additional revenue of two hundred thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars above natural growth. Riceville needs engine and ambulance replacements, they are also in the early stages of rebuilding and redesigning their main station. This increase will bring firefighters up to fifteen dollars an hour, counties in support of this requested increase. Chief Kelly is here today to speak to their increase.
Good morning, commissioners and other government officials, we appreciate you giving us the opportunity to speak to you today about our needs. Uh, Katie is gonna pass out some information for you all to have as a takeaway after this, uh, meeting this morning. Again, thank you very much. Today, we're representing Riceville Fire Department. Uh, we also have several members of our board of directors today and Katie Presley is our administrative assistant and again, I am Tom Kelly, the fire chief. Um, so why are we here? Big question. We're gonna be requesting two cents for additional to go from fourteen point six to sixteen point six. Uh, it, it is a very important issue for us and for our community to grow. Per one hundred thousand dollars of tax value would take approximately twenty dollars for this year for each. Uh, taxpayer in our district. The board of directors has evaluated and considered uh, this cost benefit and has asked me to present this to you today. We must craft a future budget that secures the financial health of our organization. While we're doing recruiting, it's our, everybody, we're recruiting every way we can. We're also trying to retain and also have a way to keep our employees working with the best tools possible with safety in mind. While we're here, the salaries and benefits, it seems everybody has something to go along with that, but for us. Our salary and benefits, we're gonna bring and maintain our minimum uh, wage to fifteen dollars an hour. Fifteen dollars an hour right now is the lower end of the pay and we must remain competitive with other agencies. Secondly, purchasing the new engine and the ambulance. We have a two thousand and six fire truck that needs replacement. At times, we have had difficulty getting uh, replacement parts for it. Uh, taking the engine out of service for a long period of time. Our ambulance has high mileage on it, it's a two thousand and seventeen paramedic ambulance that supports the Riceville community as well as. Uh, Buncombe County when specially needed on request. Third, planning to replace the nineteen sixty building. In nineteen sixty, their, the vision of where we are today was a much different vision. And we do need to make our building more modern. So how are we gonna do this? The use of funds. We're gonna uh, work with recruiting retaining specialized employees. With a paramedic ambulance, you have to have people that are specially skilled. And these new skills are challenging every day, we're getting new protocols. We're getting new equipment that we have to learn how to use to provide the best life-saving that we can to our community. These skills take time. Our department is seeing the same thing as everybody else across the United States. Our number one asset is our employees, I don't think anybody in this room would disagree with that. And while we must plan for our financial stability, we need to make sure that our organization uh, is doing the same for our employees and their families as well. As the living wage increases, we work to recruit and retain our employees. Providing medical and firefighting certifications uh, to meet the requirements and standards through their, their career. We give them opportunities to uh, advance their education, so we want the best employees. Our equipment replacement schedule. We have tools that serve the, the apparatus, but they're aging. We maintain them to the best of our ability. Based on the evaluation of the needs, the tools do have a expiration date. Just by lack of being able to get parts for them and people that can work on them effectively. We have SCBA, which is our number one asset for fighting fire. We have to be careful not to buy all of our equipment at one time because they all do have some type of expiration. Our bottles have fifteen-year maximum life on them. If we had to buy twenty-five bottles at a time, then we would have a very difficult time maintaining what we have. So we are planning on small replacement increments with all of our equipment. We're trying to upgrade uh, our equipment as well throughout the budget years. Our current vehicle replacement needs us to, to bring in a new ambulance. This ambulance has served us, but it is too aging. We must upgrade our structure so that our building can accommodate new equipment. Finally, our future stability for financial reasons. We have the responsibility to ensure the stability of the financial. Ongoing operations of our organization. The established and operating funds, uh, reserve fund, vehicle fund, building fund, help us prepare for the future. So that we can pass it on to the next generation and pay it forward to those that, next leaders that take over. I thank you very much for your time, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions?
Chief Kelly, I'm.
Yes, ma'am.
Not picking on you because, but you specifically mentioned throughout your presentation recruiting and retaining employees. What, what is your current vacancy rate and, I mean, all chiefs could probably answer this too, but what, what is your long-range plan? To increase above the fifteen dollars an hour um, to that living wage?
So we, we have a three-tier uh, plan as far as where the employee is with their training and give them that incentive. To stay on board with us, we're looking to increase our longevity as well, so to increase the longevity, we give them. Very specific incentives and that is where we're trying to get to. We have people that work two, three, four jobs and we, we see the stress, we see what that does to them. We have that loyalty of our part-timers and our full-timers and we are, are addressing these things just so that. We let them know we truly care about them, they're not just a time clock number. So if we make this personal for them, then it truly shows we care.
We also have budgeted merit and cost of living increases within the next five-year plan. Um, to maintain that and help move that fifteen dollars upwards as, as the living wage in Buncombe County moves to twenty. And we're just not able to get to the fifteen, so we are moving that forward with planned merit and cost of living.
Thanks, Ms. Presley, I appreciate that extra.
And that's built into that three-tier.
It's into the three-tier, great, thank you, I appreciate the work of all of our, our firefighters and um, each of you, so thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief Kelly.
Thank you very much, you know, a great day. Thank you, sir.
Upper Hominy is requesting an increase of two point four four cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. This will result in additional revenue of one hundred forty-two thousand three hundred seven dollars above natural growth. Upper Hominy's request will support a one-dollar increase for all employees, which will bring all full-time staff to at least fifteen dollars an hour. The increase will also assist with increases to retirement contributions. Upper Hominy initially requests a two point six four cent increase and after discussing their request with the county manager and budget office. Have been able to revise their budget and lower their increased request to the current two point four four cent increase request. County is in support of this requested increase, Chief Presswood is here today to speak to their request.
Morning commissioners, folks that don't know me, um, I'm Shane Presswood, I'm the fire chief at Upper Hominy Fire and Rescue. And yes, we are asking for a two point four four cent increase. We originally looked at doing two point six six cents due to our natural growth of only around twelve thousand dollars. After that was reviewed, our growth increased to twenty-four thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars, so that allowed us to lower that to make it even nineteen cents. Um, as we spoke earlier and all of my colleagues spoke to, we are also working towards getting our employees at fifteen dollars an hour. So, just to give you an example, I know Buncombe County with, with talking to county manager, said you're looking around a seven percent increase for cost of living, so our lowest paid. Full-time firefighter, this will put him at fifteen thirty-five with the dollar increase, which is exactly seven percent. So we're, we're staying within that mark, um, we're also looking at adding three percent to our 401K. Currently, we do ten percent contribution to our 401K, um, as Chief Beddingfield spoke to earlier. We're looking at having that minimum thirteen percent there, so if the state retirement is able to open, we already have that money allocated. So we can go ahead and be able to present to that. Um, and like I said, uh, the numbers we have are a little bit different, um, Heather originally had our growth be one. Hundred and sixty-six thousand six hundred and twenty, it shows one forty-two there, so uh, my number's a little bit off, we'll, we'll adjust that, but either way. Every bit of that money is going into our employees' pockets, it's going into retention and getting that minimum fifteen dollars an hour. We wanna make sure we provide them the best we can with the 401K if we're not able to get into the retirement. Um, one of the things that's a little bit different about our fire district is we're very. An isolated portion of Buncombe County, so even though we have a lot of mutual aid coming, the only mutual aid we can count per um, DOI is in Kandlar. And that's because they're the only department that has a station within five miles of our, of our district. Therefore, we man two stations and we have to have paid staff, so we have to make sure that we take care of the staff that we've got. Also, a lot of our district is taken up by Pisgah National Forest, so there's no tax base there. And the same with the uh, the new state park, which were wonderful that's, that's happening, but there is, there is no tax with that, so. We do lose some money with that, so those are the reasons we're coming asking for an increase today, so, does anyone have any questions? Good deal.
I just wanna reiterate to the group. We are just now trying to get our firefighters who are literally running into burning buildings to fifteen dollars an hour. When our living wage is twenty-ten, and I think that is shocking, particularly when we have groups coming to us asking. For much more significant increases than what you all are, and I just want each of you chiefs to know that I recognize what a crying shame that is. That we are only looking at fifteen dollars an hour and I am so grateful to each of you and the work that you perform across this county.
Well, thank you, we really appreciate all of y'all's support, um, any other questions? Yes. Okay, so what, what is now, I think Chief Beddingswell, folks, excuse me, Chief Beddingsfield spoke to it a little bit earlier, so right now, we give ten percent. Um, to each of our full-time employees into the 401K, we're adding another three percent, so that's thirteen percent, so that is the department's contribution. Um, right now, we are not allowed to present, we're not allowed to participate in the local government retirement. And that's because we are a nonprofit that contracts with the county. Now, there is legislation at the federal level to open that up, we want to make sure we have those funds allocated. To, if that opens up, then we can get in on that, we don't have to come back and ask y'all for extra funding. If it doesn't fall through, we're still be able to give that thirteen percent to our employees, so that's where that three percent increase is. Well, yeah, and I, I know that there's a, there's a contingent of chiefs from North Carolina that are going to DC, I think in the next couple of weeks. Um, to discuss that with some of the folks in the Ways and Means Committee, et cetera, so I think there's some bipartisan support for it, I hope that it goes through. Um, North Carolina has said three times they will support it, but it's an IRS ruling and that's the thing, is with it being an IRS ruling, it's all in the wording. And we're kind of, we're kind of an anomaly with that, so I think that's kind of where that issue is, if we can get the IRS on board. Then North Carolina's already on board, because it makes our system that much stronger, so. Okay, absolutely, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank y'all for your time, y'all have a good day.
Additionally, we received a request from the North Buncombe Weaverville Fire District and after discussion with. With the county manager and the budget office, they have withdrawn that request. There's no further questions on fire districts, we're going to switch gears to education. I've shared the slide at our last work session, this displays the year-over-year unrestricted revenue growth rate. Which the county agreed to use in fiscal year nineteen to begin discussion of the annual appropriation needed for our public school systems. The appropriation has outpaced that rate each year. We have a placeholder in the budget that fully funds the salary study that Buncombe County Schools brought to us last year. For an increase in funding of ten million dollars to both schools. While the county has continued to increase its contribution year-over-year, the average daily membership of the public schools has shrunk considerably over the same time period. So that the contribution per pupil has increased from two thousand seven hundred ninety dollars per pupil in fiscal year nineteen. To an estimate of over four thousand one hundred dollars with the placeholder currently in the budget. This is an increase per pupil of forty-seven percent over the five-year period. For a larger snapshot of school budgets, this is the fiscal year twenty-two expenditures by source. These expenditures are salaries and operating and do not include or consider capital expenditures. Local fin, local funds to include the supplemental tax supported thirty-six percent of Asheville City Schools. Sixty-five million dollars in expenditures, while county funding supported twenty-two percent of Buncombe County Schools. Two hundred eighty-nine million dollars in expenditures. The follow-up fiscal year twenty twenty-three amended budget includes one hundred four point nine million dollars budgeted for our education partners. The unrestricted revenue growth rate would push that amount to one hundred eight point four million dollars. This budget currently contains a placeholder of one hundred fifteen point three million dollars for our three education partners. We will now hear from our education partners, beginning with AB Tech, followed by Asheville City Schools and then Buncombe County Schools.
Good morning. Uh, before Dirk gets into the details of our budget, I just wanna bring you up to date. On the state of AB Tech, uh, as you know, the pandemic hit us quite hard. As did all higher ed, uh, our enrollment dropped around ten percent. It is coming back more slowly than we would like, but it is coming back, seventy percent of our students are part-time. And with the cost of living that is well documented, that, that makes sense. The issue is, we do not allocate support for those students based on their enrollment. And oftentimes, students who are part-time juggling many different. Parts of their lives, it, it just takes more time to help them with academic counseling, personal counseling. So while our enrollment has dropped, our services really have not. Uh, eighty-five percent of our overall budget is in personnel. And I tell you that to tell you that even though our enrollment took a hit, which is a big chunk of our overall budget. We have not um, taken that lying down, we have addressed those issues to solve our own problems. Our students tell us they want things fast, flexible and fun. It's up to the faculty to deal with the fun, but it's up to the administration to deal with fast and flexible, we have made those adjustments to our programming. We have looked at our academic offerings, both credit and non-credit, trying to get the, the. trying to get the programming that students want, as well as our employers need to make that match. We are not asking you to solve our balance sheet issues. We have taken a good, hard look at that. Our controller came to us in December. We think we may have about two million dollar shortfall. We have addressed that through programmatic changes. Anytime we have lost an employee, and oftentimes they leave us for more money, as they do everybody. We first question, is that role mission critical? Second, can the chores of that job be incorporated into existing employees? And then third, do we even need those chores moving forward? So we are making adjustments as we are moving forward. We're asking you really to partner with us to help make our total budget move forward and go further. So Dirk, I will let you talk about the details.
All right. Repeat advanced slide, please. We are requesting a total of one point two million dollars increase from the county. This will cover a five percent pay increase for county employees, which we anticipate will be the case for state employees. And then also a restoration of a one percent underwrite of state payroll with the goal of returning to the historic eight percent underwrite prior to two thousand fifteen sixteen, and plus some increased expenses for utilities and for the phone system. And in the process, our cash reserve, which was started out at nine hundred nine thousand, will be reduced to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're putting our own funds that we've had in terms of surpluses into the mix in order to address these issues. If you go to the next page, please. Sorry, do I have that? Thank you. All right, this continuing operations and maintenance, you can see the sources of our revenues. We have this per present year, we have two point seven million dollars appropriation from the county. And we were at seventy-five percent of that at the end of March. We're asking for a three point nine percent, excuse me, three point nine million dollar for next year, which would be a one point two million dollar increase, as I alluded to before. We also receive from the county through Article forty-six, five million dollars. And that five million dollars is statutorily determined. There's no change in that amount. And then, as I mentioned before, the cash reserves on hand. It's small print, I apologize, but we will reduce those cash reserves and fewer will be available in next year because one thing, we have to replace an aging telephone system that's about fifteen years old. We want to move that to the cloud, so we're going to use those reserves to do that. And then also, we want to, as I mentioned, underwrite a one percent of the state payroll. Prior to two thousand fifteen sixteen, Buncombe County contributed eight percent of our payroll for state employees. And because of a large surplus that was accumulated in fifteen sixteen, the county, in its wisdom, reduced our appropriation by two million dollars. Well, ironically, that meant that we no longer could afford that eight percent underwrite. And so we shifted those expenses to the state budget. And we had surplus at that point after enrollment growth to accommodate that. We're now at the point where our state budget is beginning to wane or wane. And as a result, we would like to shift back to an emphasis upon Buncombe County supporting our state employees as they have in the past. And so this would be a one percent underwrite rather than the eight percent that we had. But we're hoping that over time, we could continue to do that. Again, in this year, we anticipate that that one percent will come out of our cash reserve that we have on hand. If we go to the next, please. As far as expenditure is concerned, you can see that we have an eight point six million dollar operating budget this year. And you'll see that we project we will be at eight point three percent at the end of June. We're proposing salary and benefits, that five percent increase based on the governor's request. And also, that request includes a fifteen hundred dollar retention bonus, plus a one percent underwrite, plus the continuing one percent underwrite of state payroll. So that's all worked into that figure. On the operating side, we're requesting three point four million dollars. Our contractual contract is presently under bid. And we anticipate that we will have higher expenses there to retain those folks and whoever we hire. And then finally, utilities, we are working in that phone system upgrade and cloud migration. So the total request is nine point one million dollars. And again, that represents a one point two two five million dollar increase over the current allocation from Buncombe County. I do want to emphasize that Article forty-six has been extremely beneficial to the college in that we've been able to experience the degraded condition of our facilities over time, which are now, some of them are sixty years old. We also have increased energy efficiencies throughout. Throughout, we have the solar investments we've done in solar panels that the county has done. So we appreciate all that. And we have a state certified energy manager, which is really critical for our efficiency. So all those are in place and continuing to operate, and we reap the benefits of those investments. All right, last one. Again, the summary, you can see the two budgets from this year and next, and a one point two two five million dollar increase. Are there any questions?
Can you, can you go over the information around the underwrite of the state payroll and that aspect? And just provide more detail around that, please?
Well, prior to two thousand fifteen sixteen, the state payroll was a hundred percent. But eight percent of it was paid for by Buncombe County, and ninety-two percent was covered by state funds. And so that had been operating for who knows how long. But that was part of the investment of the county in our state employees. And when in fifteen sixteen, we had about a two point some million dollar surplus, accumulated surplus. And so the county, through some of the politics at the time, decided they wanted to remove that two million dollars. So our operating budget was about eight million dollars at that point. They reduced it down to six million dollars. So we could no longer pay for that eight percent. And we had a surplus in state funds at that time, so we rolled the eight percent to the state budget. So now the state budget was paying a hundred percent of our salaries. Now, what we're proposing here has no impact on people's pay. There's no, it's not a supplement or anything like that. It's just an underwrite. Okay, so we would like to shift one percent next year back to the county budget. And that's about three hundred thousand dollars. And then hopefully in future years, we'll be able to not only sustain that, but perhaps add more. But that will help us alleviate the pressure we're feeling on our state budget at this point.
Okay, and so thanks for clarifying. So this doesn't impact actual pay for any employees, but this is just because of the shortfalls that you're having from the state, that you're needing to underwrite that, or you're requesting to underwrite that from the county.
That is correct.
Thank you for that extra detail. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Other questions?
Does anyone else have any other questions?
I would just be interested to hear today, hear a little bit more about what you're hearing from students. Were you concerned with, when you said flexible, what that means? It's all there, that's one of those issues that we live.
Sure.
You're exactly right. And it has to do, I think it's a societal issue. Students are wanting to get into the workforce more quickly. So they are wanting the knowledge they need in order to get into jobs and careers. So that's the fast part of it. So the question then is, they register as an associate degree student. They're looking at two hour or two full years of education, about a semester to two semesters is in the support programs, general education, math, English, history. Too many, well, arguably, too many of our students are opting out of those classes because they want to learn the skills for the trades that they're wanting to enter. Or they're looking for the classes that they know will transfer. So that's the fast part. Flexible, seventy percent of part-time, they've got jobs, they've got families. They've got a lot of, as I laugh with them, they're juggling a lot of balls in the air. So being tied down to having to come every Monday, Wednesday, Friday at nine o'clock for a class is less attractive than online, whether it's fully synchronous or asynchronous. So that's the flexible.
Any other Commissioners?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time and everything you do.
And next, we'll hear from Asheville City Schools.
Good morning. Thank you for having us visit with you this morning. It's a real pleasure. It's always good to come and chat with you. And we appreciate so very much your support and all the hard decisions that you have to make, all the different things that you deal with countywide. And we really appreciate the opportunity to share with you and letting you know about what we're dealing with in Asheville City Schools and what we're asking for today. You got to control them. Okay. All right, go ahead and move to the first one if you would. I want to give you some information about the school system to let you know what we look like, to let you know what we're dealing with, to let you know of our successes, that you know of our challenges, and to let you know about what our Board of Education, which I'm not sure if all of them are here this morning, haven't looked. But I think most of them are here this morning, and I thank them for that support. As you know, five of them are new. And we've been working the dickens out of them since they came on board early December. Because they've had to learn a lot. They've had to go through this budget process. At the same time, they're trying to find someone to replace me. And they are on schedule with that, and may announce that, I think, within the next week or so. And they're on schedule for a new person to come on July first. But I very much enjoyed being with the school system for the last year and getting to know some of you better than I knew you before. So thank you for that. I appreciate your support. Our school system, as student population is sixty-one percent white. The rest of it is made up of different populations. The second largest population of which is our black students, which is about nineteen percent of our population. Our staff demographics, we're about eighty percent white. If you look at the black, you'll see it's seventeen point three, and that compares favorably with what our student population of black students are. But if you look at that in terms of whether it's classified or certified staff or folks who work directly with students in the classroom, it's nowhere near where it should be. And we know that. We know the supply is not readily available as far as minority teachers. But we're working very, very hard to try to recruit all that we can to do that. Because we believe that students need role models that look like them. There's a lot of research that shows that that really helps students succeed. Yeah, let's talk about what finding success looks like in Nashville City Schools. Last year, which is the most current year that we have with data, our high school graduation rate is ninety-three point five percent. That's among the highest in North Carolina. If you know a little bit about history, this has been an issue that we've been working on for a long time. In nineteen hundred, ten percent of students graduate from high school. By the nineteen fifties, we'd gotten that up to about fifty percent. And by the early nineteen eighties, we had it up to about sixty percent. And a study came along under the leadership of President Ronald Reagan called Nation at Risk. And that study said, if our schools are so bad, if they were a foreign nation, we'd declare war on them. And that really spurred a lot of efforts and a lot of change. That continued through No Child Left Behind, and some things had happened with that. And every state has made great progress. Every school system has made great progress. But Nashville school system has really made some great progress. This ninety-three point five percent is, it's not amazing. It's not where we want to be. But it's really moving in the right direction of graduating all of our students. And this is graduating within four years. Coming in the ninth grade, four years later graduating. Let's look at the subgroups. Because this is where some of the real information shows for you. This is comparing Asheville City Schools with the state of North Carolina. Again, ninety-three point five percent for all of our students statewide, it's eighty-six point four percent. So you can see we are significantly above where the state is. If you look at our black student population, eighty-seven point two percent of our black student population is graduating in four years. Statewide, it's eighty-three point four percent. Our Hispanic population, more than ninety-five percent of our Hispanic population is graduating in four years. Statewide, that's eighty point two percent. Our multi-racial group, eighty-two point eight percent, that's the only area that we're below state level. The state is eighty-three point five, so that's a very small difference. Our white students are graduating at a rate in excess of ninety-five percent. State level, that's eighty-nine point nine percent. And these next two are absolutely amazing. Our economically disadvantaged students, these are our students from poverty backgrounds. We're graduating eighty-six point two percent of those students in four years. Statewide, that's only sixty-six point nine percent. And for our students with disabilities, we're graduating ninety percent of those students in four years in high school. Statewide, that's seventy-one percent. So someone is doing some really, really good work. We have some great teachers. We have some great leaders. Good work is being done in our schools. Early this year, there's a company called Niche.com. Niche.com is the largest company in America that works for moving families, either for purposes of changing schools or jobs, or going to universities and colleges. And they do extensive research, surveys, and they rate school systems and colleges and universities all across the United States. This current year, in North Carolina, of one hundred and fifteen school systems, they ranked Asheville City Schools as the fifth best school system in North Carolina. Those top five were Chapel Hill, Carrboro, Union County, Yad County, but Mataga County, Oak County, and Asheville City Schools. And I've had the pleasure of being so contented in three of those. Three of them, three of them. The fourth one turned me down. So things are, we're also very fortunate. We have the Western Region Principal of the Year this year, Fika Cobb at Jones Elementary School. She's absolutely fantastic. That's for all of our principals. I'll have the pleasure of going to Raleigh next week for the state presentations and state winter. I will not be surprised if we come home with that. So that's the caliber of folks that we have leading our schools. Also, in North Carolina, we have a North Carolina Governor's School for gifted students during the summer. School systems are guaranteed one participant per school system. Sometimes you'll have a system that gets two or three. This year, we have ten that will be going to the Governor's School. Also, we know that extracurricular activities that involve students are very, very important in our growth. Niche also just did a rating of all the high schools in North Carolina. Three hundred, I think it's between three and four hundred high schools in North Carolina. They ranked Asheville High School as having the fifteenth best athletic program in North Carolina. That's based upon wins, participation, and just a number of different factors. But it means a lot of students are involved in having a lot of success. So we're very, very proud of that. Other highlights, the high school level, our girls and boys indoor track team are both conference champions this year. Our girls' basketball team was co-conference champions. The middle school, our wrestling team was conference champions. And our football team was conference champions and undefeated. So great success at both levels. We also have other fantastic areas that students are involved in. Our band program, music program being one of those. Our high school band this year placed more students into the district bands and all-state band than any other district in Western North Carolina. Not any other high school, but any other district total in Western North Carolina. We had more than eighty students from Asheville City Schools who made all-district band. Most high school bands don't have that many students in them. Nine students made the all-state band. Again, Nine students made the all-state band. Again, tremendous accomplishments and achievements. Our Asheville High School Salsa Culinary and Hospitality students won first place in the state competition. And I think they just returned from Washington DC where they've been involved in the national competition. Our middle school Battle of the Books team was our regional champions, and they're getting ready to be in state competition also. Avid, this is a wonderful program if you're not familiar with it. Avid stands for advancement via individual determination. This is a program the students can become involved in in the sixth grade and be involved in it all the way through high school. And it's primarily directed students who come from backgrounds where they most likely would not go to college and where they, in many cases, would not graduate from, from, from high school. We have three hundred and eleven students involved in this program. This year's senior group, which I had a pleasure of being at their award ceremony last week, forty, forty-two large, that's the largest avid senior class we've ever had. Seventy-six percent of those graduating avid students are going to four-year colleges, and almost all of them on some kind of financial aid. Most of the rest of them will be going to community colleges. If you see the young lady right in the middle on the front row that's holding something in front of her, she's on a full four-year ride to UNC Chapel Hill. Okay, let's talk about academic achievement. Asheville City Schools is among the highest academic achieving school systems in North Carolina. Now, most of the time what we talk about is the fact that we have gaps in achievement, and we rarely admit that we do. We've chatted some about that before when, when we've been together. And I've done extensive looking at it. Every one of our minority subgroups have a gap in comparison to our white students. And, and we've looked at those. It's also extremely common in every urban system in the United States. It's not a bit unusual. It's common across most school systems in North Carolina. In some cases, not to the extent that some of ours is. But I want to talk to you about how, how we look at that and what I think the direction is that you need to look at it in, in the future. We look at two, two terms in terms of where students are performing. One of those is called proficiency. That is where students score on the state test. And there are levels that are set, and they reach a certain level, and that's considered proficiency. And there's levels above that. There are levels below that. Efficiency is an artificial number. It is different in every state in the United States. It was set primarily, I have No Child Left Behind law because No Child Left Behind required every state to have a state curriculum. Prior to that, more than half of the states in the United States did not have a curriculum. They did not have state tests, so they had to develop those things, and they had to establish cut scores as to where students were considered proficiency. Now, the way North Carolina first did it was, North Carolina actually started doing this back in the eighties, well before No Child Left Behind. And how North Carolina did it initially was they asked school systems to name, for example, their, their best third-grade teachers. And they hired a bunch of those third-grade, best third-grade teachers. And they had them look at the test results of third-grade students. And they said, knowing where third graders should be, does this score for this student, does that look like grade level two? And that's where they come up, came up with those numbers, and they set that score. So it's totally artificial. It may be right. It may not be right. In North Carolina, it has been changed seven times by our legislature. Every time they set it, school systems react to it and start meeting it and getting higher percentages. They say, this must be too easy. So they raise it. And that's happened over and over in North Carolina. So what you have then is you have an artificial number. You also need to understand, and I've looked extensively at all of our minority groups as to the issues. All of them are dealing with poverty. That's one of the overriding issues. It's not the only one. There are many other different ones, and there are different ones depending upon the subgroup. For example, black students have some different situations than the Hispanic, than do mult, than do multiracial. And you have to look at all those factors. Most of these subgroups, when they come to us in kindergarten, they're about two years behind where they shouldn't be starting kindergarten. We look at another term called growth. That's how much a student, where they start at the first of the year, what kind of progress do they make during the year? And we get that kind of information from two sources. One's called EVOs. That comes from the state testing. That's a process that takes where they are, and there's a statistical process that evaluates and shows where they should be going. That growth factor, and I'm going to share some information with you about growth. The other growth factor is what's called M-class. That's where you, we use that in earlier grades where they don't have state tests to look at the reading proficiency and how they're moving. But to look at growth, a good teacher, a good teacher will move a kid a year. And that's pretty darn good. A really good teacher will get them a year and two months or a year and three months. If every one of these students had a really good teacher and we moved them a year and two months every year, by the time that kindergarten child who's two years behind, by the time they get proficient, it's late middle school or early high school. That's what you're dealing with when you just look at nothing but proficiency. What you have to look at is what's happening with those children every year. Are we taking them where they are? Are we giving them good instruction? Are we providing extra programs like summer school and after-school tutoring and all those kinds of things, which we're doing? Are we moving them? Are we moving them? And I would suggest that in the future, you really set goals based upon where students are when they're coming in and what kind of progress is being made during the year rather than just looking at one cut score on a test. I won't be here to follow that up, but that's where I would suggest you go. And I've never talked to any educator that will not tell you that of those two factors, growth is by far the most important, by far. Some information for you. This is from last year's state testing data. Lucy S. Herring Elementary Schools overall growth score was the fourth highest among elementary schools in the Western Region. Lucy S. Herring and IRB Jones had the second and the fifth highest math growth of all elementary schools in Western Region. Lucy S. Herring and IRB Jones met or exceeded growth for all subgroups. Every subgroup exceeded growth. Asheville High School, Asheville Middle School, Paul Fletcher Elementary School, Monford North Star Academy, and Salsa met growth for all subgroups. Black students, system-wide, met growth at every school where the data was available. I don't think you knew that, did you? Black students in every school met growth last year. Across all schools, overall proficiency rates increased from last year in forty-two of fifty-nine EOG or EOC-tested areas. And Asheville City Schools ranked seventh in the state in our ACT composite score. That's the test they take to qualify for college. M-class is an assessment system that is teacher-administered. It's required and given in every school system in North Carolina, also extensively nationally, so you've got, you can get some comparisons. But it measures, it's a measurement of reading, students are reaching, reading, reaching the benchmarks that we set for them. And we do this in kindergarten, first, second, and third grade. And are tested at the beginning of the year when they come in and then to mid-year to see what kind of growth they're getting. If you look at kindergarten at the beginning of the year, our, our students, thirty-two percent of them when they came into kindergarten were meeting benchmark, benchmark. Off to the right, the middle of the year, that has increased to fifty-seven percent. Second grade, first grade was thirty-seven percent at the beginning of the year. That's increased at middle year sixty-two percent. Second grade has gone from fifty-two percent to sixty percent. And the third grade has gone from fifty-seven to sixty. Again, significant growth among these students. A lot of teachers, a lot of folks working very hard to achieve this. So we're, we're very proud of this. Their staff salaries, I want to talk a little, little bit about that. Also, you've heard it from everyone that's presented to you today, and you'll, you'll hear it in every presentation that you have. So go ahead and shift to the next. I want to share with you just a few comments of some of our staff made to our board. Our classified employees currently, the beginning salary starts at fifteen dollars an hour. And these are folks who are trying to live in an area, whether they live right in the city or not in this area, that has the highest living cost in North Carolina. And we are competing with fast food services and everyone else now who's paying well in excess of this. We have gone with significant numbers of classified folks positioned vacancies this year. I have folks who are doing dual duty, instructional assistants who also drive buses, who are working sixteen, seventy hours a week. Custodians who are doing the same thing, who are working sixty or seventy hours a week. You can only do that so long. You know, I, I worry seriously about their health. We need to, to get out of some of that situation. Our goal is to take our classified pay at a minimum to twenty dollars an hour this next year. You, you've seen the statistics. You know those numbers. I don't have to justify those to you. We, we've seen them. They're, they're hitting, hitting everyone. But for us to be able to compete, that's what we're, we're having to compete. For our folks to be able to have a living wage, that's what it's going to take to do it. And that is one of our board's goals for next year in the budget. Our beginning teacher salary is also an issue, not just beginning, but all of them. But the beginning teacher salary is a nice reflection of what we're dealing with, all of them. We compete with other systems in North Carolina, and we compete with systems across the southeastern United States as we hire folks. And we found ourselves this year having people from other states who we normally would have probably hired turn down our offers because they were making more money than other, other states. And North Carolina used to not be in this situation, but we are now. So I, I've done a good bit of research. These are the latest numbers. Most of the states in the southeast, not most of them, but a significant number of them have a statewide salary schedule. And if they do, that's what I'm showing. If they do not have a statewide salary schedule, then I've identified systems, what I, some are, some are us that make up of, of economics and so on. When that county, Georgia, starting teacher salary this current year is fifty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. And Georgia has just passed legislation that will increase beginning teacher salary statewide by two thousand dollars next year. Florida, forty-eight thousand, starting. There's legislation in Florida right now, I don't know whether it passed or not, that would take beginning salary next year to fifty-five thousand in Florida. Virginia is forty-six thousand, two sixty-seven. Louisiana, forty-six thousand, one hundred. And we used to say, thank God for Mississippi. They're below us and everything. Now their starting salary is forty-five thousand, five hundred. Greenville, South Carolina, who we compete with heavily for teachers, forty-five thousand, seventy-five dollars. Lexington, Kentucky, forty-four thousand, one oh six. Alabama, we also used to say, thank God for Alabama, forty-three thousand, three fifty-eight. And the North Carolina average is forty thousand, five fifty-nine, and we're slightly below that at forty thousand, three thirty. And West Virginia, thank God for West Virginia, thirty-nine thousand and fifty-five. So how do we look in North Carolina? Again, comparing us with similar kinds of systems economically. And these are not the highest ones. Derrick County on the coast actually starts at about forty-seven thousand, the beginning folks. But New Hanover County, forty-four thousand, seven hundred. Guilford County, forty-four thousand, two fifty. Wake County, forty-three, six ninety. Chapel Hill, Carrboro, forty-three, six sixty. Charlotte Mecklenburg, I'm not going to read all of those to you, but you can see where we are in comparison to other school systems in North Carolina. And our goal is to be competitive, and we do that through our supplement. So our fund, funding request to you is to deal with these budget challenges. And our board, I want to again commend them. They have put in hours looking at budget issues, looking at potential reductions, looking at needs, looking at what priorities should be, and talking about all of these different issues. And, and you, they're unanimous in what they've come up with, so please understand that. They're not split. It's not six-one. It's not four-three. It's a, a solid seven-oh in where they are and what they think's important. Meeting the living wage for classified folks, competing for teachers in the southeast and in North Carolina. Matching mandated state salary increases, the, the House budget just passed as a four-point-two-five percent plus a step for, for all employees. So we, we have to match that locally, and we have two-hundred-and-thirty-three, I believe, that's locally paid folks. Matching mandated benefit increases in the areas of medical insurance and retirement benefits. Reduction in state funding, we will lose some students this year. Don't know what the final number is going to be. The state projection is a hundred and seventy-seven less, which equates to about one-point-five million dollars. Funding requirements for additional charter school in the district. And of course, what everyone else is dealing with, inflation. You know, we're hit with it just like everyone else is. We're proposing two, two ways to meet these salary increases. One is through some additional dollars that would flow to the classified salary schedule. The other piece of it- The other piece of it would be increases in our supplement, which covers all employees in Nashville City Schools. Not every school system does that. But we have the same supplement schedule for classified as well as certified. Our board has a history of believing that everyone should be treated the same. And you can disagree with that or ask questions about it, but that's their position. That's where they prefer to stay. Zero to four years experience, the current supplement is nine percent. This would go to sixteen percent. And you can see the corresponding each range going up by seven points. Other budget adjustments, our board did look at a lot of areas that I gave them information about. And they decided on some reductions in three areas. Some small school staff adjustments, they do not want to touch student facing positions if they can help it. But there were some areas, especially at middle school where the numbers are down, that they felt some reductions could be made. Central office staff adjustments and personnel, three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. And other central office adjustments, and that's in areas of things like travel, professional development, special events, expenses, those kind of areas, five hundred and thirty-five thousand. So the board did make a really good effort and made a reduction of one million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars in the budget before they began to look at the other numbers. So we're making a few requests for. First, we are requesting that you increase to twelve cents from our current ten point six two cents on the city supplement, school district supplemental tax. That would yield an estimated one point seven million dollars to help do these things. And it's all going toward the salaries and the benefits issues. And capital revenue, we're expecting, asking for just what you've been doing. Giving us articles forty and forty-two sales tax amount. And then our board would allocate about one point nine million of our fund balance on that. But basically, that's a flat request. Local current expense, that's the big area. This is what we expect before any request for increases. The sales tax, it comes to us four point seven million, seven million. Accounting appropriate allocation, sixteen point eight. That is what you gave us last year, plus the one point five commitment on the salary increases that you did to both school systems. And then supplemental tax, we're requesting thirteen million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, nine twenty-eight. And that includes the tax increase. That's the one point seven included in that, which would be a total of thirty-four million, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, four fifty-four. This is the form that you asked us to make our request on. The top of it deals with salaries and benefits. The bottom part deals with other costs. If you look at the top part in the second column from the left, twenty twenty-three, and look at the total. That totals this current year is lower twenty-three million. If you go to twenty twenty-four to do the things that were requested, that would go to thirty, lower thirty million. The other things at the bottom, other areas, you'll notice there's no increase. We've held those areas steady. So, but the total would go from thirty-four point nine million to slightly over forty-two, two million. And if you take out the revenues from that, that we projected, the fund balance that our board has projected to use two point four million of that. Our request to you is an increase in county appropriation of four million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And that's showing that same, same thing again. And again, if the increase in supplemental tax is not increased, that would increase by one point seven million. Also, you're very generous and giving some additional money with the school community impact funding. We want to make sure we reported to you on that. Twelve thousand, five hundred of that flows to Asheville City Schools. And we use that for PlaySafe Moss for our elementary playgrounds. And we're very, very, very appreciative of that. Thank you for doing that. So, so thank you. I know we talk a lot of time, but I wanted to share all this information with you. We'll be happy to try to comment or answer anything you might have.
The commissioners. Sure. Dr. Cosby, first, you have been an absolute breath of fresh air this year. Thank you for your service and leadership at Asheville City Schools. In the five minutes or so that you spoke about proficiency versus growth, I've learned more about it in those few minutes than I have sitting through now five budget work sessions with our school districts. So thank you for that. And these are supper time conversations at my home, as you will know. From you, not only today, but over the past year. First, I want to say I am beyond understanding and sympathetic to the needs of our school employees. When my husband first started teaching in Asheville City Schools, our monthly grocery budget was two hundred dollars. That's all we had. I still remember having to tell my child he couldn't have a fifty cent lollipop in Ingalls because we couldn't afford it every single time. And my guess is if you see him and ask him, he still remembers that because funds were tight. We had to have someone renting our mother-in-law apartment just to afford childcare costs. I understand this in such a way that it's, it tugs deeply on me. And I want that to be known as I asked some questions in Buncombe County Schools. I'm going to ask these of you all as well, so be prepared. I also appreciate your original attempt to decrease the budget ask. I've watched the budget meetings. I've watched the school board meetings live and in action. And again, lots of supper time conversations in the Edwards household. However, the requests from both districts that are coming to us are shockingly large. And it's going to make the Buncombe County Commissioners be the bad guys in this situation. And that is not a great place to be. And I want that to be heard from my perspective, that the buck has been passed to us now on these decisions. Because after sitting and watching two different school board meetings now, the largest requests were approved by your school board to come to us to have to determine what we can feasibly do within our current tax structure. With that said, what other efficiencies and cost savings are on the table should you have to go back and make those decisions? We look at the ADM, enrollment is down. We know there's one school in particular who, two schools, who are not at capacity in terms of students within the building. We also know that one school has an eighteen thousand dollar per people expenditure when that is far above the rest of the districts per people expenditure. So are there conversations about what to do if these requests cannot be met? That's my first question. My second question is, I can't walk to a sporting event. I can't walk into my son's high school without hearing from teachers. They are supportive of the twenty dollars and ten cents increase for classified staff. But what they say where no one else can hear them is that puts their salaries above mine as a beginning year teacher, as a first year teacher. And they're afraid to bring that forward. So how does, how does that also get addressed and rectified in this situation? When we know, and I hear loud and clear, they don't want excuses about the county and the state. The North Carolina General Assembly sets these salary rates. How does that situation get rectified with classified versus beginning teachers? So those are my two questions.
You want two answers?
Yes.
Well, on your first question, based upon whatever this board does, we will, we will look at adjustments. We'd have no choice but to do that. We've already discussed a lot of them. The board has a lot of information on different potential options. They don't like any of them, but that, you know, we'll react to whatever this board decides. You know, many times, great progress is made only with bold, bold moves and bold statements. Our board does not believe they're requesting anything that is not needed. And I don't think they in any way intended to try to shift the blame to anyone. It's a, it's a process of going through and looking at needs, identifying those needs, coming to the group, the body that does control the funding and making, making the case. And then you make the decision on it. You know, I'm a, I'm a big boy. I've been doing budgets for over thirty years. Sometimes I got what I asked. Most of the times I didn't. But always adjusted to whatever that was and went forward with it. As far as the discussion or the statements about classified staff getting to the point of making more than beginning teachers, that could be the case if we don't do the supplement increases. That's partly why the supplement increases there is to do more than that. So that's an effort to adjust, do above.
That's really helpful to know that piece. Thank you.
It's the last time the city school district tax was increased.
The last time you did anything where it was to decrease it. It was twelve. You decreased it to ten point six two, I believe, when you did, when reevaluation was.
It was revenue.
It was revenue.
What's in Greece, what they got, did not.
Yeah, it was revenue, it was revenue neutral.
That was at the time when we raised the tab.
Yeah, and it was revenue neutral.
It was a revaluation on twenty nineteen.
But what, like, an actual increase?
That I don't know.
But probably because no one, we don't know in this room. It's probably been more than ten years. I mean, right?
No.
Okay.
This is my settlement. Yeah, it was only two, three years.
Okay. And then I was hoping you could, I guess, speak to a little bit more detail of the the consequences of the funding requirements for the additional charter school in the district, like.
Well, we won't know exactly until we see exactly how many students they have and how many of ours. We do have to share a pursuit and amount of our county appropriation and our city supplemental tax and sales, my sales tax. Sales tax and county appropriation. And if the charter school is located within our district, then we also have to share part of our supplemental tax with them. But we, we're projecting probably twenty to forty students that which could range from two hundred and some thousand to four hundred and some thousand dollars that we would have to pay to new charter school.
Last question, I plan on asking both districts tonight. I only ask it because it's something I worry about. And that's just, that's student retention or recruitment, which is a weird word to to say out loud in, in respect to elementary school. But I guess, how do you think about that and what kind of steps have you guys taken over the last year?
Well, there's, there's a, there's a, some, quite of a natural decrease in student population in the district anyway. Simply because families are not having as many children. There are also some middle-class families who are moving away. There's, there's no housing going up.
Yeah.
So there's some reasons for that. And the choice, you know, the legislature is doing more and more to entice people away from public schools. You've seen the latest bill is vouchers for families who have children in private school. Now, that's the next big, big pot of money. The result of that will be a loss of certain families from public schools. You know, so we could talk all day about that. We do also accept our district students. We have a significant number of those. It looks like that's going to be up this next year. We get a lot of students from outside the district and elementary schools and high school.
Commissioner Sloan, one thing that they've proposed as well is increasing the out-of-district enrollment at Asheville High School to help offset some of the other.
Yes, we, our goal is to increase our district there by a hundred students, and so far we're right at sixty additional ones have already registered.
Thank you.
Good question.
Um, first of all, thank you all, and thank you to members of the school board and staff who are also here today. I just want to take a moment, first of all, just to reflect on and appreciate, I think, a real sea change in the tenor of conversations that we're having and just appreciate the very transparent and very intensive process that you all have been through at the systems level in developing this budget and set of recommendations and requests. Um, just at a more personal moment, I have, like many in the room, I have a kiddo in Nashville City Schools. And each and every day, see what this data tells at a macro level. I see that playing out at the, at the individual level in terms of how people are showing up to serve our kids. So I just want to appreciate that. And I also, you know, when we're talking about kind of granular level budgetary decisions, it's a very practical debt, a kind of numbers-driven conversation. But I just think it's really important that our community is having a very clear-eyed, forthright discussion about the extraordinary pressure that's being put on every community in North Carolina by what I would phrase at this point, the dereliction of duty we're seeing from the legislature. When you cross-reference the slides of beginning teacher salaries in the Southeast and North Carolina, you see the hard work local communities are doing to try to kind of get our heads above water, so to speak. Um, the reality is that there is no substitute for leadership from the state. And despite vast reserves and court mandates to release Leandro funding, that funding is stuck. And I think we need to be clear sighted about the fact that there's no, nothing to imminently suggest it will move in ways that will provide relief to people on the front lines of this work or move the needle in the ways we need to in North Carolina. And I think it's just critically important as we have these conversations that we are having a very honest, forthright discussion about what that means for our local communities. And specifically, the decisions that we as elected officials at the county level will need to make, but also the implications for local residents, many of whom are involved in school systems, many of whom are not. And what this comes down to at the end of the day is whether we're ready to raise taxes to fund things that there is an extraordinarily strong argument for funding. I don't know where that conversation is going to land at this point, but that's the conversation that we're having. And I think we just need to say it as plainly as possible. The state is not doing what the state ought to be doing. It's putting extraordinary pressure under us on every community in our state. And here in Buncombe County, we have to decide how we are going to respond to that. And it's not a question just of today or this budget cycle. It was, it's been a question for many years. It is likely to be a question every single year for the next decade. What I hope we can do is we, perhaps, oh, okay. What I hope we can do as we move forward is perhaps adjust our posture so that each and every year we're not coming to the brink of this discussion and throwing up our hands and saying, we don't want to raise taxes, but instead have a measured, methodical discussion about how we want to approach the years ahead. Because there is no other way to generate the kind of revenue that's being asked for by both systems except to, through taxes at this point, unless some other entity decides that they want to start pouring revenue into these systems. That's not a fever dream. Those, those entities exist. At this point, they haven't made the decision to start allocating money to our local school systems. But I always think everything should be on the table until we know it's off the table. All that to say, as a prelude to, you know, the conversations we'll be having in the weeks ahead. I just think that all our community is best served by us all being sort of adults in the rooms and the way we need to at our kitchen table and the way we need to know at the community level and having this discussion. People are going to hurt if we raise taxes and people are going to hurt if we don't. And we have very hard decisions ahead of us about how to respond to that challenge and what to do about it. So I just want you to know that I see very clearly what you all have been doing. I appreciate it. It's what our community has needed. It's what our kids need. It's what teachers and staff need. And the same message to Buncombe County Schools, you all have been doing exactly the same work, and I see and appreciate that. And I hope we can all stay at the table together and lean in together because the decisions ahead are not easy ones. And they are going to have tough complications for people in our community, no matter what we do. Thank you.
I always make the mistake of speaking after Jasmine, which is something I'm learning I should not do. Just put it perfectly. Just to echo some of that, in my experience for these past few months of being on commission, it's been great to hear from a lot of folks. I recognize we, we've had this looming on the horizon, and I would echo the idea of us looking at this long term. I'm a multi-year thinker. That's just easier for me to digest. And I think we're having the right conversations around what funding can look like and should look like. And just projecting out what that's going to mean for us, not just this year, but going forward, I think would be helpful conversation for our community and us as we're working collaboratively in this space. I don't think anyone disagrees on our priorities. It's just the mechanisms by which we get there and how quickly we can serve the kids, which is ultimately what we all care about.
All right.
About commissioners, um, I think we're at a, a really, I, I love the inflection point we're at right now as both Buncombe County Schools and Nashville City Schools, Buncombe County with their new superintendent, Asheville City, we hope to be able to announce in the next few weeks with our new superintendent and the conversations that we can have driving us forward. You've spoken very eloquently to the, to what, um, a- as you heard one of the educators say, that this, this dichotomy that we have between what the state is doing um, or is failing to do, um, and the pressure that puts on county commissioners and each school district. Um, and so it's never been our intention to come forth and say that we're passing the buck to y'all to, to do this, but we recognize right now, um, as you've heard from AB Tech, is actually there was a slide earlier on, um, the needs of our community have changed drastically through COVID. Um, so even if we're seeing ADM going down, that doesn't mean that we're not seeing needs go down as well. Um, and so the, the board in these conversations, and I appreciate that council, I'm sorry, that, that commissioners have been watching our conversations. The needs of our children right now is so extreme. There, there, there's so much crisis happening in our schools that the idea of taking any staff person out of a school because of budget considerations is a hard ask. And we recognize or that we're putting that out into the community. But we also recognize a, as, um, as you said, that this is a, this is a multi-year conversation. And so as this new superintendent comes in, we have already, as a board, talked about what kind of conversations do we have with that superintendent around facilities, around, um, recruitment and retention of teachers, around recruitment of families, um, to, to keep them in the public system. Um, and to really uplift the wonderful things, as you've seen from these slides, that are happening in our schools. And so I do want to acknowledge that, yes, at this moment, it's a big ask, but also that we are as a community talking about what does this look like two years from now, three years, five years, ten years from now? And this ongoing conversation about how we can all, as a collective, bond together, support Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County Schools. So we thank you for that, the time to, to hear where we're from.
Thank you very much, George. We appreciate that and thank you, Dr. Posy. We appreciate your time and information. Oh, you do have something there?
Yeah, I do. I do. Um, I want to thank you. You know, this is my seventh year, the budget, and we're getting better at it every year dealing with. But I hope something that Jasmine touched on that we all understand, as commissioners, we're being pushed right in the middle. On above us, we have a state legislature that bills up six billion dollars in surplus. They pass the lottery bills saying that all of it will go to schools. They take out of that. Uh, and you give us this and we've got to also manage our tax, taxes because our constituents are being pushed too. They live in Buncombe County and the city of Asheville. So it's a tough, it's a tough ask. And I think what, uh, Jasmine did a good job of saying, and I probably will even, uh, be a little hard on that, is that we've got to make hard decisions, folks, where we like it or not. And going forward, we cannot just keep throwing money at this and expect it to give us the results because it hasn't worked so far. Uh, when I look at the, and I'm going to have to touch on this, at the achievement deals, you know, I want somebody to explain to me. I'm beginning to think that somewhere we've got some magicians because when I see the wide achievement gap we have in the city, but yet and still I see the, uh, graduation rates. It just don't add to me. Are we losing these students or what? Uh, I, that, I s- I think some of that has been misleading to me, but you'll never get me on the right page there because, uh, when you look at Chapel Hill, you mentioned there how great they are. And Chapel Hill and Asheville City spend more money than any two school systems or did in the state. But yet and still, they both have large, wide achievement gaps. Something we're doing is wrong. You know, we've got to address that. And as an African-American man, I continue to be appalled when I see the achievement gap. It's no excuse for that. When you look at the money we spend, we have, uh, the tax, and look, I've lived in the city district longer than a lot of you have been alive. Uh, and I pay the taxes. I graduated from city school. Both of my daughters, right through the University of North Carolina system. Uh, I have a grandson now that's in Sosa, uh, the eleventh grade. So I see what's going on. I also talk to families in the district who look like me. And I see what they're going through. I know that. But we've got to do better. If you're going to ask me to increase my taxes, I want to see that I'm getting something for it. And I don't feel that I am when I see what's happening to the kids who look like me. And this is something, folks, I've been on, talking about since I was fifteen years old with A score here in Asheville. And it's something I hope will be solved before I leave this earth, but I doubt it seriously. Cause you know, I told the superintendents this earlier and I still say, I question if you people even know how to address or solve the achievement problem. I don't think I'll ever see it, but I want you to do it. But these are tough problems for us back to what we gotta do. But we've got to make hard decisions. We've got to be adult about it. We can't keep everybody happy. We can't keep two middle schools. You've got North Sol there with two hundred some kids. You've got Asheville Middle School that we fought for when I was on the school board, the only two new schools you had in thirty years. And it only has, what, about less than six hundred kids next year? But yet and still, you're going to have two new, two middle schools. And it's interesting, when you look at the scores in the two middle schools, it's a, it's a big difference in that, and especially in achievement scores. I want to see, and I will continue to say this more from, I want to see you do what you need and I agree with what's happening and the, we're seeing the enrollment drop. And it's continuing to, and it will probably continue to drop based on what's being done and robbed. But I want to see what we are doing to manage our school. And sure, we need more, uh, help with employees. But I also question if we have people on the right seat of the bus. Is it that we need more employees or that we need to expect more from the employees we have? And to make sure that the people we have are the right mix? I don't know. But I will tell you this upfront, it will be hard for me to vote for a tax increase for, when I look at what the people in this county are going through.
Well, thank you, George. Thank you, Dr. Posy. Everyone, we appreciate your time and this very thorough presentation.
Thank you very much for having us and, uh, giving us this much time. I, I know you have busy schedules. I also want to thank county manager and her staff. They, they've been wonderful to work with. And I always say, when I grow up, I want to be just like her.
Commissioners, I have to be can take a short break before we do Buncombe County Schools.
Is that okay?
Yes.
So we'll take a, how long a break do you want?
Five-minute break.
Here we go.
Okay, thank you for that nice little break and we're ready to get started back here, John.
Yes, we have Buncombe County Schools here.
Well, that's quite a start to your presentation.
Well, I was going to reference that as we took a break and thank you to our county manager for the break. I walked outside and I noticed that the sun had broke through the clouds. It's bright and bright morning and so that's always nice to see. Madam Vice Chair, members of the Commission, thank you so very much, Madam County Manager, for the opportunity to spend some time with you this morning, to share with you. As you know, I have just finished six months in service to Buncombe County Schools. It is an incredible blessing now in my 10th year as Superintendent to have the opportunity to return home, to serve a school system and to serve in a county that has poured in so deeply into my family for generations. And I very much appreciate that. I've just completed my first 100 days learning and listening adventure. I had the opportunity after spending a full day in all 45 of our schools and addressing all of our six municipality town councils and the county commissioners twice. And thank you for that opportunity, having seven community town hall meetings across Buncombe County and really doing all that I could to listen and learn. This past Thursday night, all of that culminated in a presentation to our Board of Education about all that I had heard and learned and experienced in our 45 schools. And I can tell you that we are incredibly blessed in Buncombe County to be served by two great school systems. Of course, I'm referring to primarily to Buncombe County Schools. Asheville City Schools is amazing school system as well. I do want to say thank you to Commissioner Whitesides and Commissioner Moore for being there last Thursday night to represent the county commissioners. The partnership our school system has enjoyed with this commission is absolutely outstanding. It's a point of pride for our school system. It's something that my predecessor, Dr. Baldwin, would talk about often in superintendent meetings at the state level. The appreciation that he had for Buncombe County for all that the county has done for the school system. In my short tenure, I have heard our Chief Finance Officer multiple times in our public meetings with our Board of Education reference the partnership and the good work that the Board of Commissioners have done in supporting our school system. And so here at the outset, I just want to say thank you regardless of the outcome of the incredibly tough and difficult decisions you have to make in the weeks and months to come. We're grateful and appreciative of all that you do and grateful and appreciative that you step forward to offer yourselves in service to tackle those really tough decisions. And so it's an honor for me to share with you about our school system. I'd like to share very, very briefly from all of that time that I've spent in our school system, getting to know our school system, some strengths and opportunities. One of the greatest strengths, the greatest strength in our school system is our students. Our students are absolutely excelling academically, artistically, and athletically. I spent a lot of time with individual students and groups of students, walking through their buildings, asking them questions about what they loved best in our school system and what should ever change. And I asked them if they were principal for the day, what would they change in their school? And the answer I got most was wouldn't change anything, I love it. Second was I'd like to have a little more time for lunch. And so we'll work on our daily schedules, but our students are absolutely amazing and it's certainly a blessing to be able to serve them every single day. We are the strength of our faculty. Our teachers and our staff members are what we offer to Buncombe County, to children and families. Our school system is somewhat uniquely blessed in the state to have an incredibly experienced staff. We know that, I know as a teacher, I was much better my second year than my first year with apologies to the children I taught as a beginning teacher. And teachers get stronger and better every single year. And so as you look at the years of experience, and I won't read that to you, for our Buncombe County Schools teachers, you'll notice that 47% of our teachers in our school system have 15-plus years of experience. And that certainly speaks to the quality of the teachers in our school system. It also speaks to the historical decisions this commission has made through supporting the local supplement. As I've been in our schools, I was surprised on a personal level by the number of teachers we have who live outside of Buncombe County, but who travel into Buncombe County to teach in our schools, to bring their talents, their experience, and their expertise to our children. The local supplement is a draw for them. And so whichever side of the county we happen to be on, we have teachers from our neighboring counties who are coming in. And so that helps us, as you know and you've heard from many, we have an educator pipeline issue in education as a profession. We don't have enough young people going into education. We've done a fabulous job talking about how hard it is to be a teacher, maybe to the detriment of actually having new teachers come into the profession. So we have to do a better job of talking about the blessing of being a teacher. We also have incredibly educated teachers. 730 of our teachers have master's degrees. We have 20 teachers with doctorates who are teaching in classrooms. 311 of our teachers have National Board certification. And so all of that experience and expertise is part of and what we offer to our students. And we're very proud of that and we're proud of the strengths of our teachers. I'm extremely proud of our literacy instruction. You may be aware that the state of North Carolina required of all elementary teachers, kindergarten through sixth grade, letters training. Letters training is based on the science of reading, which essentially breaks down the core knowledge students have to have to be able to read. And in our Buncombe County Schools, I've spent a lot of time on the carpet with our students, sitting literally at the feet of amazing teachers. And I'm very proud of that work and I look forward to that work in our primary and elementary schools, translating to student academic success throughout our system, pre-K through 12. And so we're very proud of that. This is one area that I hope our commissioners talk about often because it should be and is, I think, a point of pride to the work that you've done. The arts program in Buncombe County Schools is almost incomparable across the state. We've mentioned the state and Commissioner Beach Farrar, I appreciate your comments earlier about what the state is or more likely not doing. One of those things is in our teacher allotments. There was a class size mandate that came out a couple of years ago that mandated smaller class sizes in kindergarten through third grade, which is a good thing, but didn't address students in grades four through 12. There was also, it appeared to be a lack of understanding of our state legislators that that fund also funded our arts teachers or enhancement teachers. And so when they did that, it decreased our ability to have arts teachers. In Buncombe County, though, we have 742 teacher, or 742 staff members who are locally funded. And because of that, we offer as comprehensive an arts education program, as I'm aware of, in the state of North Carolina. Last night, I had the opportunity to be at an orchestra concert at Inca Intermediate School. And as I listened to students playing the violins and the cellos, I recognized in the two previous systems that I worked in, incredible systems, there were no strings programs. And that's a credit to Buncombe County, the county itself and our commissioners offering that funding so that we can offer these incredible opportunities to our students because we recognize the importance of the arts and athletics in increasing a student's motivation to continue to work hard academically and to be successful. And so we're very, very proud of and consider a strength of our school system, our arts program. Moving from strengths to opportunities, the opportunity that really stands out in all of my conversations with our staff members, in the conversations I've had with community members and the conversations I've had with students, is this need around mental health support. I don't know if it's all caused by the pandemic or the pandemic revealed a lot of things that might have been there that we just weren't paying attention to. But we have seen this school year, an increase in aggressive behaviors in our schools, an increase in referrals to counselors. And so this data is as of March 31st. I'd highlight a couple of things. 301 times as of March 31st, we met with students to go through suicide assessments where students were literally considering whether or not to end their life because the pressure was so hard on them. And really, this slide makes real all of the conversation we're having today around our educational institutions throughout the county. The number of school-based mental health referrals, 592 as of March 31st. In preparation for today, I asked for our current number. The current number as of May 1st is 1,832. That includes, incorporates the 592, but it also incorporates our mental health partners. And so at this point, almost, well, 1,832, 1,832 referrals for mental health needs in Buncombe County Schools. And certainly, that's one of the great opportunities for us. Around that work, the school system is finalizing our student, our code of student conduct. That code of student, code of student conduct, excuse me, is important work. And what I love about it is the work pairs supports with consequences. So for every behavioral choice, there's a support so the student is less likely to make that choice again. Certainly, there has to be a consequence, but we want to make sure we're supporting our students as they grow forward. Our administrators have gone through equity and social justice training through the Hunt Institute. We're growing that out through our classrooms to continue to grow our ability to connect with our students' cultures, languages, and life experiences with what they learn in school. One of the areas that I heard most about in my visits was a need for expansion and revisioning of our alternative education services, which is not to have a place to put students away, but to have a place to have our students spend time growing their ability to be successful and then to get them back to their base school just as soon as possible. And so that work is, we're right in the midst of and we're looking forward to rolling that out in August. And since the board presentation Thursday night, I've heard from multiple staff members who've emailed me with appreciation because that truly is a great need across our school system. In terms of opportunities, the thing that keeps me up at night is teacher and staff retention. I mentioned our greatest strength is our teachers. Our teachers are who we are. Without our teachers, we're not offering a service, a needed service to our community. And so in terms of trying to address that teacher and staff retention, and this goes right to the heart of Commissioner Beach Farrar's comments earlier, we've been working on our advocacy, our passionate advocacy at the state level for salary and benefits increases. I was in Raleigh a week ago yesterday to advocate for our teachers. We have invited our local state legislators to be in our schools next week. We're going to put them on a bus and go visit some schools and talk about real life in real schools. And we know that, we look forward to their great support. But in terms of the advocacy, very specific, not only around that increase in state-funded base pay, which is so needed and absolutely deserved, but things like reinstating advanced degree pay. We have some very experienced teachers who still get paid for their master's degree. Most of our teachers do not. Restoring longevity pay, which traditionally was available to teachers, that was taken away. Restoring full retirement benefits to folks we hire into the school system, that was taken away for folks who were coming into the school system in 2021. And then advocacy for full-time permanent substitute teachers. We've seen a growth in the need for substitute teachers. That may be a reflection of teachers' own mental health and well-being, where they are with everything that's going on. We've seen more teacher absences and so a full-time permanent substitute teacher, not only it helps us fill the classroom, but it also has a person who's aware of the school's culture because they're there every day and able to continue the instruction going forward. The advocacy for local supplement increase, and we'll talk about that. And again, I mentioned how much we appreciate what we have and are very grateful for that. I also think around teacher and staff retention, that part of that is working conditions and making sure teachers feel valued in our actions. And we were walking that out. And a couple of the ways that we're doing that, it's not only making sure that our budget request, that the presentations I give the Board of Education reflect what teachers are saying and have said to me, but also that they have an authentic opportunity to lead our school system. And so we've been working on the establishment of our teacher leadership council. And we're looking forward to rolling that out at the start of August. So we have a teacher from every school who's meeting regularly and routinely with me. So we're trying to make class decisions at the district level as close to our classrooms as possible. The North Carolina Teacher Working Condition Survey, that's been around for quite a while. As I visited all the schools, I allowed the school to set the schedule for the day. And so every day was very different. I asked for two things. One was, at the end of the day, I wanted to be able to meet with all of our staff to share a little bit. But then, most important to me, in every open meeting I've had, there's always an opportunity for questions, concerns, comments, and compliments because I want folks to have the opportunity to say what they feel like they need to say to the superintendent so that we can address that. But the second piece was to meet with the school leadership team, to have them share their data from the school. And one of the pieces I required was a report on the North Carolina Teacher Working Condition Survey and what the school was doing about that. So when our teachers took that survey, if they said this is something we need to work on in our school, my question for the school was, okay, what have you done about what the teachers identified as something to work on? And so I very much appreciate that. And our teachers, I believe, appreciate that also so that if they say we need to work on this, they want to see somebody working on that or at least acknowledging that's something that we need to be working on. Opportunities for Buncombe County Schools around ML students. So ML is the current term for multilingual students, for those who've been around for a while. Way back in the day, it was ESL, which is English as a second language. And then it was ELL, English Language Learners. And then it was EL, English Learners Currently ML. Regardless of the acronym or the initials we put before it, it's students who have not mastered the English language. And so this current school year, we have 826 more ML students in our school system than we did last year. 486 students have qualified for newcomers services. Those 486 students, what that represents are students who cannot speak English. The largest group in there are Hispanic students, though we do have a large group of Ukrainian students. We've got, as you're probably well aware, a large Ukrainian population in Buncombe County. And so we have students not only struggling with learning the English language in classrooms to be educated, but many of those students have come through trauma to be here in our classroom. So they also have needs around mental health and well-being support. And so certainly, one of the great opportunities in our school system. We are working on our newcomer support services. There was a service called a newcomer intake center in the past in Buncombe County. We're looking at how we do that work and potentially go, growing back to that in a way that meets the needs of our students. Growing our dual-language programs, we're proud of our dual-language programs across Buncombe County. Not only does that offer students who, English is their first language, the opportunity to learn a second language, but it's also a powerful practice for students who don't speak English to be in that classroom, to help them meet their academic needs. And then, of course, advocating for additional ESL or ML faculty, and we'll talk about that in just a moment. We do have an opportunity around school support. This current year, in our 45 schools, 22 of our principals were new to the building. Many of those brand-new principals, 13 schools in the school system were designated as low-performing. I'm looking forward to our assessment results at the end of this school year because based on the instruction that I've witnessed and certainly last year's data still with some post-pandemic issues there, but I really see that number going way down. And I'm quite proud of what I'm seeing in structure in our schools. Around that opportunity, certainly the ongoing leadership development for our current administrators is incredibly important, our succession plan. So working with teachers and educators who may be interested in becoming an administrator so we can build that pipeline, working with our assistant principals. And then something that Dr. Baldwin had been working on and held back during the pandemic is we have to have a position that's dedicated to educational equity and support services. And so for us, that's the area where we very intentionally and purposely ask questions about and work on things like disproportionality in our discipline data or over-representation of certain groups in our discipline data, working on things like achievement gaps, working on things like how is this school doing? And making sure that every single student in our school system achieves the moment, the moment being when they receive the high school diploma that they've earned because we don't give it away and they take the next step. And whether that step is to a two-year or four-year college or university or to enlist in military service or to go right to work, that they're prepared to be very successful for that. And so certainly, that's a growth opportunity. We also have opportunities around enrollment, that's been mentioned earlier. This is the last six years on a monthly basis in Buncombe County Schools. And so you see kind of pre-pandemic and then pandemic, certainly that loss of students. And so if I might, I'd like to pair that back to the last three years. And so the yellow line, a little harder to see on the slide, is this current year. And then you have our month seven numbers. And so this is a month-over-month comparison. And what I'm really excited about is the last four months of this year, month-over-month, we're actually trending above the last two years. Earlier, there was a great question from Commissioner Sloan around how do we recruit students? Educators are actually having to use words like marketing and market share. And when we go to school to be teachers, we don't talk about market share in our classes, about teaching children how to read. But we've had to learn that work and we're very much involved in that work. And so as I arrived at the first principals' meeting, we talked about using social media to tell the amazing stories of what's happening in our classrooms and in our schools because amazing things are happening. We recognize that when parents have a baby, the baby is the most precious thing in the world to them and they want the very best for their child. And I believe the very best exists in our school system, but if they don't know that, they may choose another option because they got a slick marketing material in the mailbox or they saw something online. And so we have to do a great job of telling the story of what's happening in our school system. And we are, um, very much in that work and growing that work. And so part of that is sharing market share analysis with our Board of Education, and I've done that, will continue to do that, and sharing a monthly update on where we are with our enrollment and keeping our principals and our schools accountable to making sure that we're doing a great job of telling what's happening in our schools and the success we're having. And so we are tracking that very closely. And so kind of moving into the budget piece and, and certainly be happy to answer any questions about any that I've shared, like to very quickly kind of give you a budget development overview, some of our current landscape and then our, uh, budget request. And so our budget cycle certainly starts with analysis. One of the things to, uh, question that was asked earlier, I believe about, by, um, Commissioner Edwards was around, what are we going to do if what we've asked for doesn't come to fruition? We've been working to kind of rebuild the entire school system. What would it look like if we had zero assistant principals? Where would we assign our assistant principals based on academic data, discipline data, number of staff to evaluate, number of students in the building? And each area, doing a deep analysis to ensure that we have the folks that we need in the places they need to be. And if there are opportunities to make changes, we certainly want to do that. And then our budget cycle from that analysis, we go on to develop our plans and facilitate budget approval, implement, manage, and then continue that analysis. And so that's an ongoing process. That's not a yearly process, that's an ongoing process. The Chief Finance Officer is a part of our cabinet, our executive leadership team. And so she meets with me in the cabinet every single week, and that's very important to ensure that every, um, aspect of our operation is focused on the instruction and the success of our students. And so having our CFO a part of every single one of those conversations allows that deep dive and budget analysis to ensure we're, we're being excellent stewards of the taxpayers' resources. We understand that when the taxpayers hand over their hard-earned, um, money, that they are saying, please use this for the betterment of my children and our families. And we want to be able to look them in the eyes and say, we're doing all we can to stretch that as far as we possibly can. And so that analysis is an important piece of that. For school systems, and you know this, uh, we have a lot of challenges. In our state, school systems don't have the opportunity to levy taxes, and I'm glad of that as a superintendent. Uh, we can't issue debt. We have to, uh, make a budget request of you before we know state numbers, before we know federal numbers. Really, we're giving you our best educated guess because that's the system we have. And so we wind up in places where we're having to hire staff for next year before the state budget is passed. There was one year that I served as superintendent, we didn't have a state budget until November. Well, school started in August, and so we've got to be able to educate children. And so certainly that's a budget challenge for our school systems. As you're well aware and was talked about earlier, the state will mandate additional expenses, but not fund those expenses. Um, and so we wind up with these unfunded mandates that then become a pressure on our local communities and on our local counties. And so we appreciate, um, your help and all that you do, but we recognize, um, the Leandro case, for example, is one, one area where they're trying to, to work on that, that the state has, um, requirements that, uh, need to be met at that level. The majority of our state and federal funding is based on our enrollment, and so tracking that enrollment impacts our budget. In a large school system like Buncombe County Schools, though, that becomes kind of a multiplier effect in that if we lose twenty students, we're not losing twenty students at one school. So then we could say we need one less teacher because those twenty students left one school. We're losing twenty students across forty-five schools, but you can't let go of a teacher and our greatest expenses are in personnel. And so that really kind of compounds, uh, particularly the larger the system is. And so here is our current landscape in terms of our ADM trends. The second slide in the bottom corner is actually the funds that have been transferred to charter schools in, in Buncombe County. And you can see as one drops, the other grows. And we are very aware of bills that are currently in the General Assembly that might increase that. I, I, I'm an optimist and I'm, I'm looking forward to that number going down. And that's no dig at charter schools, but I'm going to do everything I can to know that folks understand what an incredible opportunity children have in Buncombe County Schools because parents have choice. And I'm, I'm great with choice. I just wanted to know the best choice is in one of our traditional public school systems. And so we're going to do our work around that to, to make that change. Um, I will mention while we're here, um, earlier, there was a mention of a new charter school in Buncombe County. That new charter school, I believe, is located in the city limits, but they have reached out to us to say that they're anticipating forty students from Buncombe County Schools to be a part of that new charter school. And so we do try to monitor that very closely. In terms of our revenue analysis, um, our, looking at our pie charts have been skewed the last couple of years. We've got one more year of this skewing, and that's because we received, as the county did, tremendous dollars from the federal government, ESRS dollars around, um, pandemic response. And so here you see that currently about fifty-one percent of our funding comes from the state, twenty-seven percent at the federal level and twenty-two percent from the local level. Typically, we're running about seventy-five percent or greater from the state, but because of that ESRS funding, that's skewed for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three year. In looking at our human capital in terms of where the funds are going, eighty percent currently is in human capital. And again, that is skewed because we're at twenty percent non-human capital because we've been able to do some things with ESRS funds around, um, improving our HVAC units, for example, for air quality, et cetera. And so that has increased the amount going to things other than human capital. But typically, we're between eighty-five percent, maybe as high as ninety percent of our funds go to the people who offer the service to the children, as you would expect in the school system. And so as we look through our budget totals by category, you'll see that the greatest percentage, of course, is in salary and, and benefits. Um, and that is as it, as it should be certainly in an educational institution. This piece is something that I want to pause on just a second to, to again, say thank you, Buncombe County. This is absolutely outstanding that our school system has seven hundred forty-two positions that are funded by Buncombe County. Ideally, we would have zero funded by Buncombe County because we got everything we needed from the state. But the commission has recognized, the county's recognized, we need to serve our students. And so we have seven hundred forty-two, uh, full-time equivalent positions. And you can see how those are spread out across different employment categories. I'll note on the far left, a hundred and forty-one of those are teacher positions. And so when I share that we have an outstanding arts program, that's how we do it because Buncombe County has done this. Now, that does become a tension on the budgeting process because when the state increases salaries for teachers, teachers don't know if they're locally paid or state-paid. Way back in the day, um, when I first started teaching in Buncombe County, you got a pink check or a blue check. And if it was pink, it was locally paid and blue, it was state-paid, and that's the only way you knew. Today, you don't know and it doesn't matter to a teacher if their funds come locally or state because it's the same thing based on their experience, et cetera. This is a point of pride, though, and we're so very grateful for the number of locally-funded positions we have in Buncombe County Schools that allow us to do the great work that's being done. To give you an idea, there's been a lot of conversation around teacher pay. And so this is actually from the state, um, it was gathered by Best NC. But you'll see the North Carolina average starting pa, pay in that kind of, uh, second block down on the left is thirty-seven thousand, one hundred twenty-seven dollars. And so to an earlier conversation, I'd like to give you Buncombe County Schools' numbers. And so you'll see our median classroom teacher salary is seventy-one thousand, almost seventy-two thousand dollars. That seems a bit surprising, but I'd like to hearken back to the slide that talked about the strength of our school system. We have a large percentage of very experienced teachers who are at the high end of the teacher scale. Our local supplement is graduated, so you get a higher percentage supplement for lots of experience. And we have lots of teachers who have, um, advanced degrees. And so that certainly helps teachers on the high end of the scale. Now, those teachers are not the completion of our teaching faculty. So we also have to be very aware of the teachers who are coming in to replace them as they retire, our beginning teachers. And so on the, the right there, you'll see base pay for a beginning teacher this current year is thirty-seven thousand dollars. With the local supplement for us, for a beginning teacher of eight-point-five percent, it brings it to forty thousand. And so when we look at trying to come up with an hourly wage, which is an interesting mathematical prob, uh, problem because our teachers work ten months a year and they have a two-hundred-and-fifteen-day contract. And so the mathematics works out to about twenty-three dollars and thirty-four cents an hour for a beginning teacher. Things that impact the way that those salaries are, are calculated is the number of days they actually work, two-hundred-and-fifteen days. State and local teacher bonuses, the supplements we have, and then, um, teachers have the opportunity to work summer school, which could impact their salary as well. All that to say, our teachers deserve everything they receive and much, 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 much more for the incredible work they do every single day. Uh, but we do want to acknowledge, um, where we are today because we are much better today than we were yesterday and we look forward to being much better tomorrow than we are today. And so, um, we certainly appreciate the work that has gone in to where we are now. And so very quickly, our operational budget, um, request, I'm going to break this down into three areas. This may be the largest increase that Buncombe County Schools has ever asked for. I can share with you, uh, from our Board of Education, that nothing in here is a nice-to-have. It's all based on needs and you have this incredible, incredibly tough decision, and I wish it weren't the case, where you can do what you can do. And again, whatever you can do, we're going to say thank you for. And certainly, we wouldn't want to back you in the corner and make you out to, to be the bad guys. We're going to do everything we can to make sure folks know the great job you're doing and to say thank you for all you're doing. At the same time, with all I shared with you, with the opportunities, um, the increase in, um, aggressive behaviors, the increase in mental health referrals, the number of schools that we've had historically designated as low-performing, uh, the job of the Board of Education is to say, here are the needs and to present that to you authentically and transparently. And so that's what we're trying to do in this budget request. And as, uh, one of my great heroes and mentors, Dr. Cosby, said, when you make a decision, we'll make it work because that's what educators do. And so I don't say that to say, don't do all you can, please do all you can. Uh, but we will, with what you're able to do, make it work because our children deserve our very best efforts and we'll give them those. And so let me kind of break that down into the three areas. The first biggest area is around increase to local salary and benefits. And so for our certified staff, it includes the step increase plus four-point-two-five percent. And so let me pause there, the four-point-two-five percent is the, um, houses, the North Carolina houses, um, budget calls for an increase to state salaries for four-point-two-five percent. We have not yet received the North Carolina Senate's budget. Uh, we assume we'll be getting that, um, next week. Once they put out their budget, as you know, then the House and Senate get together and they'll come up with a compromise. They'll work with the governor and eventually at some point we'll have a state budget. But to build our budget request, we've used the House numbers of four-point-two-five percent. For our classified staff, there's a step increase in that four-point-two-five percent. Our retirement rate increase, we built our, our budget request on, is at twenty-five percent. The House, um, actually had a number less than that, but the number the House had is actually less than we're currently paying. So we're using twenty-five percent as a placeholder there. Hospitalization rate has gone up. The increase to our athletic stipends, I've had the opportunity to meet with our coaches. Our coaches have been held at, for a long time in terms of their current supplement. When we look at an hourly wage there, i- it's pitiful, the number of hours that our coaches put into our athletic teams. And we know how many students are involved in that. And so that increase to our supplement for our coaches, the teacher substitute, um, cost has gone up, as I mentioned earlier. And so there's a request there to help us with that cost. The salary study is one of the things, when I had the opportunity to talk to Dr. Baldwin and in one of my early conversations with the manager, is what an incredible point of pride for Buncombe County that last year you were able to begin to address, um, our classified staff and their pay, pay increases and to help us with that. Um, this request is, uh, based on fully funding that salary study phase two and three, um, which helps us not only hit that minimum state in, uh, wage of fifteen dollars an hour, but addresses the compression issues that we've had for a num, for a number of years, um, where for a while, our classified staff would go from walking in the door with no experience to fifteen years of experience with no pay increase at all. And so through that salary study, the commissioners are helping us be able to ensure if I have a year's experience, my salary goes up a little bit, my second year goes up a little bit and continues to reward that experience and that loyalty. And so we thank you very much for that. The next area, um, and, and we tried to come up with a great descriptive word for this. I think in the past, the, the term was non-negotiable. And so we don't, we, we tried to say, well, that may sound harsh, so we've used immutable. And so if you have a good idea for helping us come up with a, a descriptor there, we'd sure appreciate it. But it's basically things beyond our control. So utility cost increases, we reached out to our utilities and to have documentation to understand what our increase would be going forward. Electricity, ten percent, gas, fifteen percent, water, seven percent. That total increase there is four hundred sixty thousand dollars. Our property insurance increased, um, we're looking at about a twenty-five percent increase there. Increased costs, I believe, uh, Dr. Cosby referred to it as inflation, and we're seeing that all over the place, as you are as well. Five hundred six thousand there. Um, one of the things that, uh, government entities, including school systems, have had to deal with is the issue of, um, hackers and ransomware, where basically they lock, lock you out of your own system and you have to pay millions of dollars to get back to your student data. Of course, the school system is keepers of, uh, very, very confidential information on our students and staff. And so part of our cybersecurity insurance is that, uh, we have to move to Microsoft EES to make sure that we're doing all we can to keep all of our data systems secure. And then an increase in what we're having to share with our charter schools as well. The final area is new positions and certainly in a time of, um, trying to right-size the school system, new positions is interesting. But again, um, it's important to talk about the needs and to be very transparent with that. As I mentioned, the mental health and, uh, well-being needs of our students. The request includes the opportunity to increase the number of counselors we have. Ideally, we'd love to be at a point where we're meeting the national recommendations on student-to-counselor ratios and student-to-social-worker ratios, et cetera. Uh, but this helps us move there. The next two bullets, ESL teachers or English as a Second Language teachers and that specialist really is to address that growing population. We don't see that slowing down. In fact, in the last couple of weeks, we have continued to enroll students for the first time this year with only weeks left of the school year, who are coming here from other countries, um, who do not speak English. And so they show up in math class not speaking English and the math teacher is to teach them. And so that's incredible work, as you can imagine. The cybersecurity technicians, um, again, towards protecting that data. The Assistant Director of Transportation position, uh, we're moving to the smart bus system in this next year so that parents will be able to, on their phone, see real-time where the bus is and what time it's showing up, um, at the bus stop, particularly on cold days, that's very important. We recently had our reunification drill where we, um, drilled having a gas leak at Weaverville Primary School and actually evacuated all of our students in off-site location and had parents have to pick them up at that off-site location so we could be prepared, God forbid, for something like that happening. We were able to, in our command center, see the cameras at the school, see the cameras where the students were being transported to. The new system will allow us to see our buses en route as they leave from, um, the school going to where they're going. Interestingly, we then had a, a gas leak as part of some construction work, um, that impacted Kuntz Intermediate. And we had to evacuate our students to Valley Springs. We were able to do so. And kudos to the school system safety, um, team for having traditionally done those drills. So we were able to respond very quickly. We were able to feed our children off-site. Um, and at the end of the day, as we talked to parents, they were very appreciative of how smooth everything went and the communication. And so making sure we're constantly being very aware of safety, um, and keeping our children safe is very important. And then that last position is what I talked about earlier, making sure that we have someone who is laser-focused on every one of our children and ensuring we're meeting their needs, uh, regardless of any boxes being checked and some sort of description. We want to make sure every single child is well, well-prepared to be successful, um, post-graduation. And so again, the, uh, the entirety of the increase, a huge number, a big ask, and we recognize that. But as you're well aware, we have incredible needs in our, in our families and in our children. Um, and it's certainly something that many people need to be involved in. We've referenced the state and there is a big need for the state to step up. But I think it's bigger than that as well. And, and really, when we think about what is happening with our children, birth through four years of age, that's certainly an important part as well so that our children come in. Uh, we don't want our children coming in so far behind that we're having to spend so much time trying to catch them up. And so lots of work to continue to do, um, but I certainly want to, before I kind of show you some, some kind of- But I certainly want to, before I kind of show you some kind of fun slides. I just want to say how much we appreciate what you've done and how excited and optimistic I am about Buncombe County Schools. I can't say that enough. I may have spent more time in classrooms than most people, especially in the last six months. And having sat at the feet of our teachers, literally. There are great things happening in our school system and I'm so very proud of the work they're doing. And so very quickly, thank you for the school community impact funding the commissioners share with the school system. And I know you love to receive updates. And so we'd like to show you at Irwin Middle School, we were able to add a projection system in their auditorium area. Our counselors have talked about how they've been able to use that to actually communicate and communicate with others out of state. And how fabulous that is for the school. At Estes Elementary School, you can see how we've been able to add cameras to that school to increase our security presence. And we certainly appreciate that opportunity. At Kane Creek Middle School, there's a presentation system, the screen is not down in this photo, but a presentation system has been added there as well. And then at Woodfinn Elementary School, we're really excited about having a playground at Woodfinn Elementary School. And we're actually going to have the ribbon cutting on May eighteenth. And we'd love for you to be there, but they are very excited to have a playground at Woodfinn Elementary School. And we're very excited for that opportunity as well. And so again, thank you for that community impact funding. Hall Creek Elementary School, we were able to address the playgrounds there as well. We again, thank you for your generosity and support of our school communities across Buncombe County. And Madam Vice Chair, be happy to answer any questions or hear any kind of feedback from our commissioners. Thank you again for the opportunity to present.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I'll kick us off again. I'm going to ask the same question first. Dr. Jackson, thank you so much for your presentation. I do want to say that while I was not able to attend in person last week, I have gone back and I've watched the entire meeting. So I really appreciate the overview of your first six months as well as the opportunity to hear the comments from Buncombe County Schools employees.
Thank you.
They were moving.
Absolutely.
Very, very much so. Had to find the tissues a couple of times as well. So it really, really drove home the seriousness of this ask. And also want to acknowledge the school board members who recognized the heavy lift that this is. Specifically heard Ms. Clemmons say that she knew that this would entail a tax increase. And I think that was one of the first times I've really heard that brought to the surface of this conversation. So thank you to Ms. Clemmons and other board members who recognized that. You've addressed a little bit, your cabinet meetings, looking at ongoing budgetary priorities. I will say, you want to know what happens if there's no APs? Your principals are going to bolt. Those APs are vital to the administration of those school buildings. So you want to know what happens? You're going to lose principals. But I appreciate that, you know, you're looking at all options while that feels a bit nuclear to me. When I first saw your budget number, I kept saying over and over, thirty-three point nine million American dollars. I'm saying that over and over because it was so shocking to me. So my first question is, it's two parts. How did Buncombe County Schools get into this situation where we're looking at nearly a thirty-four million dollar ask? When we've not seen anything like this? This is my fifth budget cycle, Commissioner Whiteside, Seventh and others. This seems shocking. Does that have, have things just not been addressed outside of salaries over all these years? And then the second part, outside of your nuclear option, you know, are you all prepared to go back to the drawing board to make, you know, necessary decreases? Should, should the decision not come back exactly the way that you all are asking for it?
Commissioner Edwards, thank you so very much. And I do want to make sure I'm really clear, I would not suggest we could operate school with zero assistant principals. Simply to say that zero-based budgeting is one method of looking at budgeting. It's not always perfect when we start thinking about school systems as a methodology. However, we try to employ multiple methodologies to ensure that we are being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. And zero-based budgeting simply says, start with nothing, address needs and see where you wind up. To look for those opportunities where we may be able to cut. The school system has been and appears to be a lean operating school system. And I know Dr. Baldwin said that year after year, I've watched several of his presentations. And after being in the school system, I agree with that. And so to that second question, in terms of are we having those conversations? We certainly are. We're having those conversations with our teacher allotments, with our coaching allotments, our instructional coaches allotments, our central services allotments. In all areas of the school system. In terms of the big ask, we're a big school system. And so when we start talking about a supplement increase, we have approximately full, part-time and partial employees. Like substitutes and substitute bus drivers, et cetera, five thousand employees. And so when we start talking about any percentage supplement increase, the number gets really large very quickly. And so as you saw, as we kind of broke that down, most of that really big number is in the area of personnel. And so how did we get here? I think there's a lot of factors in that. And one of those biggest factors is exactly what you referenced. And thank you so much for, and I know they greatly appreciate all the opportunity that the commissioners provide our staff by being in our schools and listening to them in individual conversations. And watching the comments. Our staff members are saying loudly, we can't afford to live in Buncombe County. And so the ask is really about trying to do everything we possibly can to help them with their salary and benefits. In terms of if that, you know, whatever the commissioners decide, we're going to make that work. And then as we know what that supplement is, we know our teachers will make individual decisions. And so we want to incentivize them to stay right here in Buncombe County Schools, not just because of salary and benefits, but also because of working conditions. And so thank you for that tough question. It's one that I've grappled with and one that our Board of Education has grappled with. I think more of my hair is gray than when I got here in November. Some of it might be turning loose, but that's okay. We're going to keep doing that really, really hard work. I really think that in terms of how we got here. You know, that's such a tough question, whether that's a result of the pandemic exasperating mental health needs. Whether that's a result of cost of living increasing in Buncombe County, and maybe it's all of the above. That being said, I do feel like, and our board felt like it was important to at least present to you the needs that have been presented to them. And we thank you for allowing us to do that.
Any other commissioners have questions?
I would like to ask one question. But before, I would like to thank you, I enjoyed the meeting here tonight. And I want to commend you for being very open and transparent with your budget. And from talking to some of your school board members, it's been obvious that it's been all the way down, the time that you all have put in the budget. But one thing that I know Commissioner Edwards has thought up a lot that I don't have to ask. But one question I have, and really I wish I'd asked it before, is you know, we have put, when I see the numbers up for utilities. And we've put a lot of money into the solar equipment, you know, throughout the school system. Is when will that begin to show up or is it?
So I'll address kind of generally, then let Ms. Thorpe address it. Those solar arrays are coming online. So we just recently had the array at North Buncombe or North Wendy Ridge, rather, just came online. And so that savings will show up as time goes on. But quite a few of those, and we're talking about the first phase of that, the second phase, we haven't even started on. We're still waiting for the construction process, but I'll let Ms. Thorpe.
So two of them are online, is what we have out of phase one, and we have not started phase two. And then we have been analyzing all of the offsetting costs associated with the solar. So we have not experienced the true cost savings yet from the utilities, from the majority of them. But we are analyzing and we'll keep an eye on it. And we also are looking at the different costs that's associated with those particular items as well.
And thank you for the question. I had the opportunity to meet with the county manager about the solar program in the school system and how we're working through that and we'll continue to do that. Thank you, sir.
I have one question if no one else. Okay. You go ahead.
Exactly, that's exactly right. And it's a very small percentage of teachers at this point who are grandfathered in. But we do have those teachers and because we have such an experienced staff, we have, we have teachers. I've not worked with teachers who receive master's pay in other districts just because it's such a small number across the state. But here we do.
Start master's program before August of two thousand thirteen. If you did not meet that deadline, you're no longer qualified. So as we keep getting farther away from that date, fewer and fewer are eligible for their master's pay. It is.
Okay. So thank you for this detailed presentation. And you pointed out, I think it was seven hundred and forty-two local employees that the county is covering as well as the supplemental pay. And then can you share some more because the classified, so the classified compensation study with that. Basically, those are positions, if I'm understanding this right, that that pay should be coming from the state. But because the state is not paying at the level that you need them to for that, then the county is also paying for that. So in effect, that's additional supplemental pay for the classified employees. So can you just share more details around that?
Sure, absolutely. So when the state made the decision to go to a fifteen dollar minimum wage for classified staff members in school systems. They funded all classified staff members receiving fifteen dollars an hour. But the funding wasn't sufficient to actually address classified staff members with experience or longevity. And so you wound up with this exasperation of the comprehension that had really started occurring as far back as two thousand eight. And so the county has helped with, through the salary study, increasing the salary so that we can be competitive. I heard somebody else talking about fast food earlier today and it may have been one of the fire chiefs. And so to be able to have the custodians and the maintenance folks and the transportation folks and the clerical folks. The county is actually helping through that salary study, the base pay. And then as Dr. Cosby mentioned, what an incredible blessing that in Buncombe County, there's a classified supplement, classified staff member supplement as well. And so really, the county is helping at both the base pay level and the supplement level for our classified staff to the credit of Buncombe County.
Thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it. Any other commissioners have any final questions?
Yes, sir. Here we go, we've got it right here. So that's not all arts teachers. That's a Schmoritz Board of Teachers. And so without getting way too in the weeds, though, I'll be happy to, as deep as you'd like to. One of the things we try to do is at the state level, we receive what's called position allotments. Where they'll say, hire a person, whatever they cost will cover. And so if they're very experienced, they cost more. If they're brand new, they cost less. They also have dollar allotments where if somebody's more expensive, it takes more of the dollars or less. And so when we can, we want to move the less experienced staff to our local budget. And let the state pick up the experienced staff in the position allotments because overall it saves the school system money and saves our Buncombe County money. And so these positions allow us to have the arts educators, sometimes picking up the actual arts educator. But the arts educator may be very, very experienced. And so the arts educator might be paid with state funds. But we're paying a kindergarten teacher, for example, locally, because the kindergarten teacher is a brand-new teacher and so the cost is less. And so in terms of who's in those numbers, we try to have, to the extent possible, our least expensive. And I hate to even use those terms referring to employees in our local dollars to maximize and stretch our local dollars as far as possible. And our most expensive employees in the state position allotments where they're saying, we'll pay for the person regardless of what they cost. Does that kind of make sense at a high level?
And the state does not provide enough allotment for the electives, for the cultural arts, for the PE classes at all. Those allotments are different.
Right. Absolutely. And there is a bill in the General Assembly to just completely overhaul how school systems are allotted, completely change. We do have as a state, one of the most complex allotment systems in the country. And it's something that's been worked on for years. I think about seven years ago, I was asked to address the General Assembly on the complexity of our allotment system. And so they've been trying to work on it. If they move to that, there's a lot of consternation around what that might be. But it's because the complexity of the allotment system that we wind up in situations like this. And so to your question about thinking about future boards of commissioners or future boards of education and what they may do. They potentially could be faced with a very different set of circumstances if the state overhauls how they fund education. That being said, they might also have this same set of circumstances in ten years and so, you know.
Well, thank you. Are you?
So I just wanted to ask for a little bit of clarity because there was, you mentioned during the meeting from, I think it was one of your data folks, I'm blanking on their name. But during the Board of Ed meeting, there was some discussion about priorities and what percentages fell where. I remember diversity being surprisingly kind of low at eight percent. And I was curious, one, you could give some context about what that meant? Is that just they're meeting their goal, so it's not a concern for some of our staff members? And two, what specifically the Assistant Superintendent for Educational Equity is going to be targeted at? Like what's their goal? Is it to open the door to more trainings or is that addressing something else? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, so, and thank you for the question. We had from the survey that we, I gave out the three questions, what do you love best? What should never change? What should be working on first? Each person, whether it's a community member at a town hall or a staff member, kind of addressed the question, what should you work on first in different ways? Some mentioned multiple items, some mentioned the thing that was most pressing at that moment. And so although the percentage of folks who mentioned diversity was lower, I wouldn't say that that means it's a less priority for those folks. It just may not be the one thing they mentioned. Some folks mentioned multiple things. They may have mentioned something like salary and benefits was the thing that they thought I needed to work on first. As Dr. Cosby mentioned, we are aware of the diversity of our staff at all levels. And the need to increase our diversity of staff at all levels because we want our staff to reflect our students. I want every child in our school system to be able to look at somebody and say, that person looks like me, comes from similar circumstances and look at the success they're having. There's a role model for me. And so that's important work and that's one of the elements that our Assistant Superintendent for Educational Equity will be working on. Is thinking about the diversity of our staff at all levels of employment in the school system. To really think about, lead our efforts around achievement gaps, around disproportionality in our EC identification. Our over-representation of groups in our discipline data. So really, that's big, huge work that's going to involve all of us. But we need someone to be the champion of that work, who brings that lens to every single conversation. Just like when our CFO is sitting at the cabinet, she's bringing the lens of finances. We need somebody who's bringing that educational equity lens to those same conversations. And so really, that person will have a big job. That's the responsibility of everybody, we're all responsible. But that'll be the person who's really deeply, deeply, deeply immersed in that work to make sure we're doing everything we can for every single child.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson and Tina. We appreciate you both being here and we appreciate all our school partners being here today and sharing all this information with answering our question.
Thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair. And I'd also like to thank our Chair of the Buncombe County Schools Board of Education, Anne Franklin is here with us. And board members Judy Lewis and Kim Clemmons are also here. And I very much appreciate their presence as well. Certainly, they're incredible advocates for our children. Thank you again for the opportunity, commissioners, and for the time you've been so, so very generous with. Thank you.
So commissioners, we are at.
So commissioners, we are at time that we had scheduled on your agenda today, but we have one more topic. So do you have time to stay for us to finish or do you like us to regroup on that one? Okay. I think we can wrap up by noon. I'm, I'm telling staff that now. So they're here that they can wrap up by noon. Okay. Thank you.
All right, community investments.
All righty. Well, now we discussed our, this whole year, 24 community investments. You have specific committee, you have specific committee recommendations.
All right, John, take it away.
Thank you. You have specific committee recommendations in your packet. I'll briefly touch on each of these investments and I have folks available if you have questions. The Early Childhood Education Committee has a funding amount of $3,892,766. Will be funding 21 programs among 16 organizations to ensure children are thriving in their first 2,000 days. The Isaac Coleman Grants aimed at eliminating racial disparities will fund five organizations at a total of $500,000. Tipping Point Grants are $5,000 grants intended to build resiliency in the community with 20 organizations funded. Strategic Partnership Grants support goals in the strategic plan and 23 programs are funded at $900,000 across 22 organizations. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, or JCPC, provides funding to reduce and prevent juvenile crime and funds six programs for $644,477. The Home and Community Care Block Grant and Aging Funds are intended to maintain independence and provide protection for adults over 60. 20 programs are funded a total of $2.2 million across 15 organizations. The Affordable Housing Committee has decided on funding to nine organizations to support 514 units or households in the amount of $4,64,1714. And new this year are Affordable Housing General Obligation Bond projects, and I'm inviting Matt Cable up to speak to these.
That presentation we have of this material. So the, this is the first time, as John mentioned, that we're going to be discussing the use of the general obligation bonds, in this case, the Affordable Housing Bonds. And these are the recommendations that are coming out of the Affordable Housing Committee for use of those bonds. And it will be part of the budgeting ordinance and process. So as a reminder, the board adopted a series of goals and objectives. And the bond can be used to advance particularly those construction and capital improvement objectives. So the goal is surrounding rental unit construction and homeownership unit construction. So the committee is recommending use of just over $13 million in Affordable Housing Bond Funds. Those funds would be for the purposes of supporting four low-income housing tax credit projects that will impact 398 rental units, which will be available to low and moderate income households. The requirement of the bond is that those households would be served. These include units for families and seniors. So there's a mix of both types of units. They will all be units that accept vouchers, which is important and another goal of the board and committee. And then there will be 89 units available to households earning, earning less than 30% of the area of income, another targeted goal, an area we're trying to work in. The projects will produce units to represent roughly 22% of the overarching stretch goal at 1,850 affordable rental units and would support almost $120 million worth of total project cost. There are four projects that are listed below and we'll go through them in a little bit more detail, just for, for your familiarity. This project location map, I apologize, it's a little faded there, but it shows the distribution of the projects. So we have a north, south, east and west distribution among the recommended projects. And looking at the unit impact and unit mix is important. So the projects which are being recommended include a variety of bedroom size types. So we have one, two and three bedroom units across the four projects. The two projects on the left, so Lake Shore Villas and Maribel are what are considered family tax credit projects. So they are not restricted by age. Redwood Commons and Villas at Haywood, the two on the right, and each of the graphs are the senior units. So you'll notice that those tend to be smaller bedroom sizes. And then the AMI levels assisted. So there again is a mix of AMI that is being assisted, some targeted at less than 30% of AMI, some at less than 60, and then also at less than 80. So there's a good mix across these four projects. The Lake Shore Villas Project is a mountain housing opportunities project. A summary, the committee has recommended a $2.6 million loan to support a total project cost of $38 million. This is a 120-unit project and has already received a 4% tax credit award. So it's not competing to receive that award. It has already received that allocation. It does have approval in terms of its development status. The site is already owned by Lake Shore Villas or by MHO. You recall that part of that acquisition was through the use of county provided funding. And then, as I mentioned, this project will accept vouchers. The second project, which is recommended to receive funding on funding, is Maribel. This project includes an $8.486 million loan. The total project cost is approaching 50 million. This project, which is located in the town of Weaverville, will include 156 units. This project is actively seeking 4% credits, so they don't have them awarded, but this will help them in seeking those credits. They do have development approval through town Weaverville and currently have an option agreement for the site. This project will be accepting vouchers and also has a seeking project-based vouchers through the housing authority, the project-based specific to units there as well as general choice voucher application. Redwood Commons, which is from Buckeye Community Hope Foundation, the committee is recommending $1.826 million loan to support just over $18 million project. There are 70 units. This project has been awarded 9% tax credits. It is located within the city of Asheville and has development approval. They have an option agreement on the site as they move forward in their process. And again, will be accepting vouchers. And then the final project, Villas at Haywood, which is WTD team development. The recommendation is a $500,000 loan for the total project cost of 12.8 million. This is a 52-unit project. They are in pre-application. So again, the allocation of funds from the county will help them in seeking the tax credits for this project. Then have development approval and an option agreement on the site. And again, it will be accepting vouchers. Just kind of back to that summary slide. Again, this is the total recommendation of 13.4, almost 13.4 million dollars from the Affordable Housing Committee to support these four projects as described and depicted. If you'd answer any questions about the projects.
Question, question I have is on these projects, what is the condition of the loans?
Sure. So the program defines loan terms and in each of these cases, because they're tax credit projects, they can seek a loan term, which is a 20-year, 2% interest amortizing, but with payments from cash flow. So it's based on the generation of revenue through the project. And then at the end of that, there is the lump sum principal payment as well as any unpaid interest through the course of the 20-year loan period.
Well, I'm excited that we're already getting some projects going with the bond fund. So thanks to the Affordable Housing Committee for your good work on that. And I'm really glad to hear the details. And just my one question, because I think Chair Newman was always talking about that per unit cost. And so I'd love to hear from you all because the Maribel one is pretty much a much higher per unit cost than all the others. So I'd love to hear your thoughts on.
I'm sure Mr. Cable can address this much more eloquently and in depth as I think he can probably recite the performance in his sleep for us. I think one of the exacerbating factors with this is LDG, who is the property developer, has made a number of concessions, particularly around the neighbors' concerns, and that has added to the cost of the project as they are really trying to be, you know, good stewards and build positive relationships with the folks who are, you know, going to be surrounding that new apartment complex. And I'm sure Matt can probably address that a little more deeply.
Sure. And we do have all the calculations on per unit cost as well as per unit investment because those are variable. For perspective, the Lake Shore Villas is around $318,000 per unit total cost per project. And Maribel is at 320,000. So they're very similar per unit cost. It has to do, as Commissioner Edwards has mentioned, with the design of the project site as well as the size and scale of the actual number of units they're producing on site. So grading and other construction costs. There's also some, when you're at that scale of development and you're building a performer, being a little bit more conservative than some of the other projects where you're seeing tighter costing because a change in a cost of, and I don't minimize it, like a fixture for 156 units has much more of an impact than the change in cost in a, a 50-unit project. So some of that is a bit more conservative on the early stages of performer development.
And beyond just unit, per unit cost, I guess our investment is quite a bit more per unit cost. I should have clarified.
Sure, and I can.
And is it still to the same? Okay.
I, I do, I think we can get them quickly.
Yeah. A lot visuals. Yeah. I forward that to you. I actually had it pulled up earlier.
The, the significant difference between, and again, you're kind of looking at projects always collectively. Lake Shore Villas is being developed by a nonprofit developer. So their access to other funding is much less restricted than LDG as a for-profit developer. So in the case of Lake Shore Villas, for example, they are seeking significant funding from Dogwood Health Trust to offset the cost of construction, which is not available to LDG as a for-profit developer. So what they can access and the other sources of funding are more significant and varied than LDG would be able to access.
All right. Thank you.
I do want to say this was a really exciting, I think is the right word, with the Affordable Housing Committee as we were really able to dig in and look at what was feasible to fund this year in a way that we've not been able to do over the past several years. And I think at the end of the day, as we look at these, you know, as we hear from folks across the county wanting to know exactly how these funds are being spent and who is benefiting from the ultimate, the final product. There are so many people across our county that are living in unsafe, very low-quality, substandard housing. I mean, you know, these are the people that are checking us out at the grocery store that are, you know, our school nutrition workers, our custodians in our schools, and they are the ones who are going to ultimately be benefiting from these incredible bonds that, you know, are, we were fortunate for the residents of Buncombe County to, to approve for us because everyone deserves to have a, a warm, safe home to go to at the end of the day. And so I think that, that can't be lost in the conversation as we're making these decisions that we have the benefit of having a warm, safe home and a nice neighborhood to go home to at the end of the day. And everyone who is living in this county should have that same opportunity. So it was a really exciting process to be a part of. And I would be remiss if I did not say thank you to the incredible team led by Matthew Cable. They made our jobs, I'm speaking on behalf of Commissioner Sloan, to a lot easier as we were able to dig into those numbers and ask a lot of questions. So the time and effort that you all put into that to help us make our decisions is much, much appreciated. I can't say thank you enough to you and your folks, Matt.
And yeah, I should talk into the microphone. Yes, we have some great applications, the opportunity to fund it. I think if you see that, that bar graph, you can really see visually how much funding is being leveraged from different places for these things, which is really cool to see. The, the other, you know, the other thought on the kind of negative end is interest rates and construction costs, which are really in excess of inflation, in my opinion, are just, are, are crushing. It would make this more difficult. And it's also the reason, it's kind of the reason we're not seeing any housing development in the county nearly at the level that we need to see, which in turn just makes this all more important. So.
Thank you.
Um, before we just wrap up that slide deck, just love to take a moment predictably on early childhood. Wanted to just share with fellow commissioners on behalf of Commissioner Warren White says as well, that the slate of, of recommended grants coming from the committee this year is a really strong, robust group of programs and organizations. Some of the priorities within that are increased slots, very specific and innovative strategies related to teacher and workforce recruitment and retention. Emphasis on equity and behavioral health issues showing up for kids in early childhood settings. And just the two other quick flags as we think about the totality of this issue. One, thanks for the discussion we had at our last budget workshop around converting this into a multi-year fund. And then also creating the provision through which funds which are returned in any given fiscal year can be redeployed based upon recommendations, recommendations from the committee and then a vote at the commission level. Those are two exciting, I think, signs of maturation with it, within this funding stream. And then also we are coming up on the one-year mark of the two-year pilot that we're funding through ARPA dollars of the Buncombe Partnership for Children, looking specifically at pre-K expansion strategies. So we'll be looking for ways to bring some initial findings from year one back to the full commission for consideration. So just want to kind of take a moment to sort of do some level setting on that, on that topic on the whole. The other thing I had was just a request. It doesn't need to happen before we conclude budget season, perhaps early in the new fiscal year, but as if staff could maybe develop some tool through which we can track the budget investment or the, the investments we're making this year and our strategic priorities relative to some of the metrics we're closing, we're tracking so closely. There were a few metrics where we were seeing things go in the opposite direction of what we're aiming for. Early childhood had some of those. I know where we're, we've been pushing against the tides of the pandemic impact. And it would just be great if we could drill down and see with this year's budgetary investments, how many new slots are going to be coming online? How many new affordable housing units? And, and some other key metrics, again, where we're pushing really, really hard to try to change the direction that we've been seeing in recent trend lines. I would love to be able to have that discussion in the months ahead.
And lastly, Rachel, to you and your group and your team and your committee members, it is no small feat to read through grant application after grant application. And your folks have done an incredible job as always of scoring those in a really unbiased manner. And I am certainly grateful that they're willing to commit their time into you for your leadership throughout that process. Thank you.
And Rachel, did you have anything you wanted to say? Okay. Well then, I think John, next steps here. Well, thank you very much to staff and to our education partners and the fire departments. And we have a lot of tough decisions in front of us. And with that, we will. And we have a lot of tough decisions in front of us. And with that, we will adjourn.